Good evening Wakefield and welcome to the Town Council meeting for January 27, 2020. It's about 6:30 PM and we will begin first with a call to order. Next item on the agenda will be actually item three which is the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm proud to introduce this evening Luke Greif, Kevin DeGray, Henry Brown, Charles Gonye, and Dan McHugh. If you could step up please and lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and gentlemen if you could come up to the table. There was a reason that I invited these five individuals here tonight and that is because they are all part of the Galvin Middle Schools 7th grade class. They're part of the Community Service Club. And the Community Service Club does a number of different projects that help our community both within in Wakefield and across the region. So we're incredibly appreciative of their dedication. I most recently saw them at the MLK event last Monday where they were putting together cold weather care packages for those within our community. And I first wanted to acknowledge the five of you and thank you for all the work that you've done for our town and for our community. And I also know that you have ongoing projects that you're working on so I was hoping you could tell all of the council here and everyone watching what you're working on next. So with that I'll turn it over to Charles Gonye to give us the update.
So we're running a towel and blanket drive and we're donating all the donations to the Mission of Deeds in Redding. So Mission of Deeds gives about 1,200 to 1,500 beds a year to people in need. They don't receive any federal, state, or United Way funding. They give things to people coming out of fires, floods, homelessness, domestic violence, and people without daily possessions such as beds, furniture, kitchenware, and blankets and towels.
And we should point out that that's something that all of you are working on. You're working on gathering up the towels and blankets now. There will be various donation locations that people can drop them off at including at some churches that will be identified in the days and weeks to come. And there will also be a collection drive at the presidential primary at the Galvin Middle School on March 3rd. So for those that are turning out for that, you know, we encourage you to bring them out as well. And again, gentlemen, I thank you for your efforts. You really are model students and model residents of our community and we thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate it. Thank you. We'll move now next to what is item number two on the agenda and that is the executive session. There is a need this evening for executive session to discuss the Wood subdivision litigation that's ongoing because an open meeting may in fact have a detrimental impact on our bargaining position as a town. And so we do intend to return to open session upon the conclusion of executive session but as we may potentially be going into executive session, I would entertain a motion for a roll call vote.
So who was chairman?
Second. Moved by Counselor Dinoco, seconded by Counselor May. So Counselor Dinoco?
Aye.
Counselor Butt?
Aye.
Counselor May? Counselor Smith-Galvin? Counselor Chines? And Counselor Donbrowski? Aye. Vice Chair Santos is on her way. Caught on public transportation at present, one of the pressing issues for our community certainly. So with that we'll go into executive session and as soon as we vote out of it, we'll be back for open meeting. Thank you. Good evening and welcome back to the Town Council meeting for January 27, 2020. We have just closed out of executive session and are now back into open session. Welcome back. Our next item is item number four, attendance. I see that we have all seven counselors here as well as Town Administrator Mayo and our clerk, Madam Clerk as well. But I do want to point out that we have Counselor May back with us this evening. And Counselor May, first off, welcome back. And I know you may have a few words you'd like to say to the...
Hello. Just a few words. Probably because of stress on the last election in March, Jonathan did very well. So as of March, I started having some symptoms as you can see and hear that I've had slower speech for about 10 months. So I've been going to the hospital for a plethora of tests. I couldn't say the word anyway before I had this issue. So everything's been negative which is great until you find out that eventually something wrong so you need to hear some diagnosis but no one's diagnosed anything which is good and bad. So being a quasi-politician is very frustrating. Also the day job, I type a lot more than I used to for talking on the phone but we have six people who can talk a lot here so now I have something said more important than me probably. So the latest test came back last week positive for chronic Lyme disease which is, people say, "Sure, I congratulate you." Yeah, it's a good thing. There's so many other bad things that can result in some of the symptoms I have. One danger is getting pulled over by the police thinking that you're drinking when you're not. A little joke. I have a sense of humor. It's okay to laugh. So the main thing is I don't want to hold this meeting on but I wanted to explain as best I can that my lack of conversation in these meetings and some of the attendance issues, you might have noticed I wasn't here, has been tied to the last 10 months with trying to find out what the heck is going on. So I'm glad to be here. This is enough for me but it's still ongoing but I wanted to explain myself. It's not like I don't care about the job and speeches, when you don't have it, you realize how important it is. So anyway, that's it for me. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Well, thank you Peter. And Peter, I think I speak for all of us when I say we're very happy that you are making the headway that you are with the diagnosis now and so now it's focused onto treatment.
Even if I don't talk, I still can vote.
Most importantly, yes.
Thank you.
We're very glad to have you back and we wish you continued health with this.
Appreciate it.
Item number five on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our last Town Council meeting on January 13th. I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Dinoco, seconded by Vice Chair Santos. Any discussion? Okay, these have all been reviewed already by the Town Council. The motion before you is the approval of the January 13, 2020 minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote of seven to zero. Motion carries unanimously. Item number six is public engagement. This is the opportunity for members of the public to be able to have a chance to address the council, raise any issues or concerns. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone that has checked in this evening?
No chairman, we have nobody.
All right, we have no one this evening. Thank you. Item number seven is a public hearing scheduled for 7:05. We're not quite at 7:05 yet so we'll move on to item number eight but we will have to have a hard stop at 7:05 and go back to the public hearing as it was noticed for that time. So with that, item number eight is the presentation of the fiscal year 2021 budgets. We began this process last week and I would invite up our town accountant Kevin Gill as well as Jan DiGian Battista who is the chair of the subcommittee related to what are considered the Town Hall budgets. Good evening and welcome to you both.
Good evening.
I'll just remind everyone that a part of the process that we're looking to employ here this year is in working with the Finance Committee, we're trying to come up with ways in which the Finance Committee could be engaged with our budgeting process earlier on so that we weren't dealing in as separate entities, siloed, but instead having some collaboration and cooperation earlier on in the process. So with that, we have a representative from the Finance Committee who has sat down and gone through all these budgets with Mr. Gill as well before coming before here and other than certainly can answer questions for us. I believe this evening we'll turn it over to Mr. Gill to do the initial presentation and then I'll turn to Finance Committee if there are any questions.
Okay.
But I think you, at first you may have an opening though, I believe, correct?
Yes, I just wanted to start out with an overall summation of the budgets that we met last week and then when we go through them individually we'll address any questions. I just wanted to say that the town budgets, they continue to be kept in good order. The main increases to these budgets are the salary increases minus some of the supervisor salaries that are still under negotiations. There were a few budgets that we had some evaluations for and some of those were just some vacant line items on the budgets that have been there over the past three years and if they deemed it feasible for possible removal upon their review. Any balance funding between the items, for example, like materials and supplies and contractual services, you know, if one is over and one is under, maybe to kind of balance those out so it's all appropriate and it doesn't look like you're losing one line item to another. And the third thing that was discussed was the possibility of combining the election budgets. We have three of them and to see if they could be combined together.
Thank you for that. We still have a few minutes so, Mr. Gill, perhaps we could begin with item eight A which is budget number four, the Treasury Department budget.
Sure. Tonight we're going to review eight of the Town Hall's smaller budgets. We have the town's financial team here tonight. We have John McCarthy, the Town Treasurer, Kathy Kelly, the town's tax collector, Victor Santanello, the town assessor, Betsy Sharon, the town clerk. She'll be doing both the town clerk budget and the election and registration budget. We have the planning board budget, the Board of Health. We have Ruth Clay here, the town's health agent along with members of the Board of Health. And lastly, the town's Medicare budget which is the town share of the Medicare cost. With that, I'll kick off the Town Treasurer's budget. John McCarthy here, the Town Treasurer. We're recommending an increase to this budget over the last year of $7,376. This increase is all in personal services and is due to contractual and negotiated increases. The main expenses within this budget, there's a $13,000 line item for tax title which is used for attorney's fees and land court costs. There's a $7,500 bank charge line item which is the cost to maintain the town's bank accounts and the cost of checks. I will point out that this department does collect revenue. They collect tax title which is delinquent taxes. In fiscal 2019, we collected over $143,000 in the Treasurer's office. Year-to-date for fiscal '20, it's almost $100,000. The total budget request for 2020 is $219,929.
Thank you. Does anyone have any preliminary questions, Mr. Gill? Does Town Treasurer or Finance Committee have anything to add?
I would just like to add, the vehicle allowance was one of those line items that's been zeroed out for the past three years to see if that's feasible to be removed and also to discuss the, we have discussed the travel allowance for the Commonwealth as it's been $10 over the past three years to see if that's still feasible or if it should be lowered from what it originally was.
Thank you. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the Town Treasurer budget in the amount of $219,929 for fiscal year 2021.
Subdued.
Moved by Counselor Dinoco, seconded by Counselor May. Any discussion? Okay, so the motion before you is the approval of the Town Treasurer budget in the amount of $219,929 for fiscal year 2021. All those in favor? Vote of seven to zero. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next budget we have, actually I'm seeing now we're at just five past seven so we'll suspend this for the moment and we'll open up to a public hearing and resume back. So next we'll head to item number seven on the agenda. This is public hearing. This is Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department. There is an application for, a petition for pole locations. So with that, I'll invite up any representatives from Gas and Light. Materials relative to this request are included in the packet that's online on our town's website. All the counselors have it available for the community as well, along with the photos as well. So with that, good evening gentlemen. If you could identify yourselves for the record.
Good evening. Vinnie McMahon, I'm the Assistant Engineer.
David Poulsen, I'm with the Light Department, Engineering and Operations Manager.
Great, well, welcome. Thank you both. And if you could just explain to the council and the community what the request is this evening.
Sure. Over on Del Carmine Street and the general area, we are redoing the whole area, upgrading it to a modern system. And there's lines that go through someone's backyard which is not only unconventional, could be unsafe. So we're aiming to change that by installing two new poles, one of which is a wood pole at the corner of Del Carmine and kind of where, I'm not sure how familiar you are with where it turns left and kind of goes into areas and businesses and across from that diagonally, a steel guy pole which is self-supporting so it doesn't need an anchor or anything behind it. It's just steel set in concrete and that's to support the wood pole. And that's set right behind the curb, just in the sidewalk.
Do you have any initial questions of the council? Counselor Chines?
Thank you. So just to help me understand as someone who is very far from being an engineer, so the wood pole which looks like it's about, it looks like it's adjacent to the baseball field or on the sidewalk next to the baseball field.
That's the steel pole.
Oh, that's the steel pole. I'm sorry. Thank you. The wood pole's across the street from that. Is there a support from, that goes across the street from the wood pole to the steel pole?
Steel wire goes from the wood pole to the steel pole because the proposed wires would make a 90-degree angle pulling the wood pole over. So we always use steel support poles instead of wood ones because they support themselves and they don't need any extra things around them.
And where is the pole currently that's being replaced? You said it's in someone's backyard. Roughly where on Del Carmine is that?
It's actually over on Wiley Place.
Okay.
So we're kind of rearranging where the electric feed comes from to get the lines out of the backyard.
Okay.
Bringing it down Del Carmine Street instead of Wiley.
Got it.
That's the aim.
Great, thank you.
Vice Chair Santos?
Hi. Was there ever a discussion to not have a pole on top of the Little League field?
Yes, and we've gone through a bunch of different scenarios and, you know, we even looked at, looking at using composite poles and other things like that but they're widely not used anymore for many reasons. So we're going with what we traditionally go with which is a wood pole supported by a steel guy stub pole as opposed to using a wooden guy stub pole.
So the configuration though, there was no other way to move it just so that, because I, you know, as most of us, children of, I mean, parents of kids who have played at this field 1,000 times, that's really close to, you know, where people are watching, the carriages and in space to kind of watch the field. And so there was no other physical layout?
It's, by putting it there, we keep it probably about 15, 20 feet from the fence of the field and it's already on an existing pole line as well. So there's already poles that run that way.
Mm-hmm.
We'd just be putting one in between two other ones basically. There's already a bunch of light poles there and this is even shorter than those ones.
This also avoids, you know, the other option is we could have put the wood pole across the street and then guided but that would have made that corner too congested next to the field. So this design actually moves the wooden pole with all the wires across the street and the steel guy pole will be near the, 15 feet away or so from the ballpark but lower and no wires on except for the one wire that connects to the other wood pole.
Counselor Smith-Galvin?
Just so I can visualize this, so the guy wire goes over the road essentially.
Yeah.
And then, okay, and that's pretty close to the road. Is that going to prevent parking? I mean, is that going to have any parking impact? It doesn't look like you could open a door if you parked right there. Not that anybody parks there because you get hit by a foul ball.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, it's typical to set them right behind the curb.
Okay.
Because we want to, you know, maintain handicap access and stuff on the sidewalk. So that's generally where we set them.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Dinoco?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So my question, gentlemen, is you mentioned that there are other poles. Is there another pole going back towards the food stand on Del Carmine on the corner? Is that what you're saying? Is there a pole on the corner?
There's one there now.
Is that being removed and being moved across the street?
No, no, that one's going to stay.
That one's going to stay?
Yep. These are for two new pole locations so there's nothing there at the moment.
Would you consider wrapping the pole at the base?
Wrapping?
A lot of children run in that area. I had a child that played baseball down there. They run into everything. I'm telling you, and parents bring their children to watch the game and they're running all over the place.
Yeah, so definitely something.
Okay, so you put in a metal guy pole there. If we have to put it there and that's the only location for it and we can't put anything bigger, can you wrap it for us?
Yeah.
To make it safe for someone, impact safe for a child?
Yeah.
So they don't get hurt?
There's things we can do.
Sure, we'll look at it.
I want a confirmation that you'll...
We don't know what product there is right now so it's difficult to say.
Can you come back to us and give us an idea when you would be able to know whether or not you could wrap it? Because I would rather not give you my approval until I know you could put a wrap around it. How's that sound?
Well, we'll definitely look at options.
Sure.
Is this the only option though with this? Is there not a better placement? Because you, I mean, the gate's right there, bleachers are right there. You do have a lot of that, you know, child, you know, foot traffic, parent foot traffic, strollers and the like and it just seems like you're really creating an obstacle there that I think if we could avoid it, it would be preferable. Is there not any other locating of it? I mean, even if it were saved behind like the bleachers or something, you know, like somewhere else where it's not right in the middle, right by that gate? Because it feels like, the way you've described it so far, that, you know, we're really solving one problem but creating another.
We could, I mean, if we put two poles on the other side of the street and angled them to one, move them away but then you create another problem, another concern. You know, it's really trying to avoid crossing over private property, trying to stay in the public way and we have to make that corner where the wires are. So we have to guide it appropriately so it won't lean and that gives us a spot across the street. I mean, we're doing this to really create a better environment down there because it's where they come across the back of the lot. It's really not good construction. It's not, it needs to be redone. It goes through the backs of residents' property and it's not accessible. So it's a little bit of a challenge. So we're trying to move it to the, you know, obviously the public way. And I think it's a reasonable plan. It's, I don't think it poses any real risk. I think it does improve what we have out there in that area, that vicinity. But I certainly understand what you're saying about the, you know, the concern with, you know, people walking into it or car doors opening and hitting it. But, I mean, the other is that we're, you know, we're trying to build an infrastructure that people rely on. We're trying to make it safe and sometimes it's not a give and take but I think you just have to weigh what we're trying to do as well and I think make the right decisions.
Counselor Dinoco?
So would you, in that case, eliminate the guy pole, the metal guy pole, and put a laminate across the street and you won't need a guy pole?
We...
Why couldn't you put a laminate pole in and eliminate?
We could do, we could put a laminate pole, I suppose. Aesthetically, if that, you know, is what the town would prefer. I know that there's been some discussion occasionally about poles and the aesthetics but if you would like us to put a laminate pole there and not a guy pole?
That would be for the board to make a determination but I'm just giving another option here. So right now, if we want to eliminate the guy pole completely from the fence side of the field, you could put a laminate in place of a wooden pole and you would eliminate the need for the guy wire going across the street, correct?
Yes.
Because of the structural engineering of the laminate pole.
Yeah, I mean, they're much deeper, they're laminate, they're wider.
Yes.
They are a much more substantial pole and, you know, I mean, we're right on the edge of the property line over there as well, so.
So it's an option, Mr. Chair, as far as what we could request but it would have to be the board requesting it, not just me.
Well, I guess what my question is, assume for the sake of argument that the board does not vote to approve this, what would be the contingencies? And perhaps that's the question they're asking. Assume that this is a no-go and I'm not saying it is but just for the sake of argument, what would the alternatives look like and how viable would they be for us?
I think we'd have to go back to the drawing board a bit and look at a few alternatives and we're kind of starting with what the best one is. There, you know, if there's a will, there's a way but we haven't really vetted every possibility yet.
We do think this is the best possibility that we could come up with and that's why we'll be for you to ask for your permission to put it there. You know, all other options probably come with some challenges. I mean, the composite pole was something we can't use, the changing the location of the guys, we thought this was appropriate for one guy instead of two. Laminate poles historically haven't been well received in town so I'm not sure that, we definitely talked about that but we opted not to pursue that. And this is a visible area down by the park, a lot of people see it so, you know, the black poles are painted with a glossy, semi-gloss paint. They look nice, they're not rusty, they're actually, they look presentable. I think aesthetically they look good down there. It's a normal type of construction so we would recommend that that's the primary design for this area, would be put the metal guy in. But if you're totally opposed to it, you know, then we'd have to go back and look for some other options but we think that this is the best option that we presented to you.
Further comments? Counselor Chines?
Just a perspective, first of all, thank you very much for, you know, bringing the presentation and answering the questions. Clearly, you know, this isn't, certainly for many of us, our area of expertise. I just wanted to say for the council, I mean, I, you know, appreciate, I think, the time and the effort that went into weighing the options. I'm comfortable with what's proposed there and that you've looked at all of the other alternatives and again, certainly with my lack of expertise in this area, don't feel that I am in a position to offer a better suggestion.
I think some of the concern that I'm hearing is just related to this particular location by the ball field, you know, and the fact that it is heavily trafficked. And I don't doubt that you would consider that, you know, in this. I'm just wondering if there's anything else that can be done that would help to kind of mitigate that concern a bit.
Yeah, we would just have to revisit it a bit, I think.
I mean, but are we kind of shooting in the dark here or do you think that there are actually alternatives that would be viable here? I want to make sure that we're doing, you know, we're doing the right things, we're making the right decisions.
Of course.
I'm curious what it would look like. So you're describing things like laminate pole, schmam, I have no idea. So, you know, you said something's black, it'd be attractive. I'm certainly not against what you're saying and I echo what Jonathan has indicated that I appreciate the work you're putting in. You're the experts, none of us are, although we may sound like it. We're not the experts. We don't, I'm guessing we don't at all. But I'm just curious, like, what a mock-up. I want to see what, as opposed to a red circle? I'm curious to see what that pole would look like.
It would look, and not to get you off.
No, that's okay.
It would look similar to a streetlight pole, a black streetlight pole.
Yep.
That you see, not as tall by any means but it would look similar to that. So it would have a, it would not have a, it would be, you know, connected to the, in concrete in the ground.
Yep.
It, I think the height is 20 feet or so and it has at the top of the pole, it has a steel wire that goes from the top of the guy pole over to the wooden pole.
To the wooden pole.
So it's painted black and it's, I think, nine inches or so, 10 inches in diameter roughly. So it's very, very similar to a streetlight pole.
Streetlight, okay.
Yeah, except not as tall.
And the one thing that I agree with Paul saying and it's, I wouldn't put it contingent to my vote because I assume we could get some sort of protective, you know, covering just because it is an area where people are going to be, little kids might walk into it, so just to make it a little bit safer. But I wouldn't hold a vote contingent upon that. I would trust that you would find something that would be appropriate. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments? This is a public hearing and so we also have the opportunity for the public... This is a public hearing, and so we also have the opportunity for the public to weigh in as well. I guess before that, has there been any outreach to the public relative to this of anyone nearby to date?
Not yet. We were going to do this first and probably reach out to the public after if need be.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone here from the public that wishes?
Just one thing, Mr. Chair, we do send out letters to abutters and to abutters to abutters. So there was that legal outreach, but...
And do we have any members of the public that would like to be heard on this issue? Yes, sir, if you could come up to the microphones. Good evening. If you could just state your name and address.
Yeah, Anthony Akary, 20 Del Carmine Street. So I own the property across from the ball field. And I was originally here because I'm building a building on the corner of Del Carmine and Water Street, and I thought that was the pole movement they were talking about. But anyways, because that line goes across my property on the Water Street and Del Carmine. But I was just wondering where these poles are going to be. Are they going to be on the Del Carmine side of, like, the 20 side where I am? Or is it, like, I don't know?
I'll defer that to gas and light.
That'll be the locations.
Okay, yeah, so my building's right here.
Yeah, your building's right over here. Your property line, as soon as this fence between the...
Well, no, I have, yeah, right. So the only thing that I would complain about is, like, when people are pulling out, is it going to be a visible thing? Because there's a lot of traffic that goes around my building, including the ball field. So they come out, they take a right, and now there's nothing there.
We need to push that a little bit inwards.
Might just put all lines underground.
That's very expensive.
But it's a safe haven over there, should be, you know. I think that would be the best option.
My only concern then would be to take a right out of my property, because that's a one-way coming out of my property, and it's right there. So I don't know if there'd be any visibility.
You have a potential traffic visibility concern?
Right.
Got it. Okay.
And it is a private way, so they were talking about public ways, so it's a private way there.
Okay.
And I don't know if that's the town property, or is that my neighbor's property?
I believe that's a town. I thought it would be town property.
Town property. So let me make sure I get picked up on the microphone.
Yeah, so my only concern would be the visibility there.
All right.
Thank you.
Fair concern, perhaps, gentlemen, if you could answer that?
Sure.
This gentleman, I think he said it was 20 Del Carmine, he's on.
Thank you, Anthony. Yeah, we can back that pole up a bit to, you know, give clearance on the corner. Just to make sure if people are turning, they don't clip it. We can back that up a few feet, for sure.
And have you ever looked at the traffic aspects of this, like he's talking about it backing out and those sorts of things?
We've not studied that, no.
Further questions, comments?
And when would you intend to be starting this project?
Probably in the spring sometime, maybe April.
Would you be able to come back with the images like Vice Chair Santos was talking about, so we can kind of get a visual of what we're looking at here?
Uh, yeah.
Is that something we would be able to do?
Sure.
Because I think that might be...
Yeah, we can get some images. We can take some pictures of other ones in town that are similar.
And we can cut it and paste it into the location.
Right, that's what I'm thinking, so we can see exactly what it looks like that way. And the concern about the underground piece?
The underground is very, it's definitely more complicated.
Yeah.
You know, you have to, you know, ideally, we put this pole line in, and, you know, the communications might move over there as well, only to eliminate going into the back yards. But to put the primary underground, you know, it just, it has challenges on cost and also maintenance, so.
Is that part of one of the longer-term objectives, to try to get more underground for reliability purposes, or not necessarily?
You know, it's depending on the area. You know, sometimes it's very expensive to underground, and it's not necessarily more reliable either. Usually, if there's a problem, it takes longer to fix it. But, I mean, this area, there's not a lot of issues that would cause an outage in the overhead. So it's, you know, so it's not something we looked at in detail down here.
Further questions, comments, thoughts?
I would just say, when you do come back with the visuals, I think it'd be interesting to see what other poles, like how it fits in with what else is on that.
Sure.
That street would be very helpful, I think.
I think perhaps just like a few more photos, from just different angles, so we can kind of see the broader perspective would be helpful, almost like a Google Images type. If you could do that without so much trouble, that'd be helpful for us, I think. So maybe then for this evening, why don't we table a vote on this? We can invite you back as early as the next meeting, or whenever you're ready. We want to make sure we keep you on track, certainly for the project. And then you can also address the relocating, as the neighbor had indicated as well, you know, the next time, if you could submit that before us. Does that work?
I think where it's public hearing, you want to continue with...
To a date certain.
Sure.
Either the 10th or the 24th of February.
Is the 10th enough time? Would you like to go until the 24th, which?
10th, 10th would be okay, yeah.
All right. So in that case, I'll entertain a motion then to continue this public hearing to February 10th at 7:05 PM.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Dinoco, seconded by Counselor May. Any further discussion? All right, so the motion before you then is to continue this public hearing to February 10th at 7:05 PM. All those in favor? Vote of seven to zero. The motion carries unanimously. Gentlemen, thank you so much for your work tonight.
Thank you very much.
And we appreciate you refining this for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Why don't you say a couple words while you're bringing Kevin up for the next round of budgets, I'm assuming, that you're doing. If I could just say, you know, that the town council has received or will receive tonight 20 or 25 budgets, and we call them the town hall budgets, kind of the administrative function of the town. And we have a few to go. There's a great bonus tonight, because you have our great, our whole financial team here tonight, and they do a fantastic job and have really done a great job for the town over the years, and I do appreciate it. Want to say that publicly. Kevin jumped in before I could. All the budgets that we have presented to you, including this evening, if all are approved, will increase, are a 2.66% increase over last year. All the ones you did last meeting and the ones tonight. If you do add in the employees that are in the supervisor union or follow the supervisors' union and haven't, we haven't accounted for, that increase, that account is still out, you're looking at a total increase of these budgets of around 3%, okay? Just so you have that in your mind. I know there were some questions last time. That's including the ones we did before. So I do want to thank Kevin for all the hard work and our finance team. And I do want to thank the Finance Committee, Subcommittee on Town Hall Budgets for coming in and working with us on it. So I do appreciate that. So thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Didn't want that to go for...
And Mr. Mayo, I think too, most of that increase is, in essence, salaries, right? Salary increases.
It is, most of it is, in essence, salaries. There is an extra election in there.
Right.
There is Medicare increase, which is also salaries. But mainly salaries is part of that, which are contractual.
Thank you for that. So we'll go back now to item number 8B. This is budget number seven, the Tax Collector Department budget.
Yes, Tax Collector's budget. We have Kathy Kelly here. Kathy does a great job in the Tax Collector's office. Kathy and her staff keep the town running. We're recommending an increase to this budget of $5,176. This increase breaks down $2,714 to the tax levy, $2,462 to a water and sewer transfer. This increase is all in personal services and is for contractual and negotiated increases. I will point out that the Tax Collector position follows the Supervisory Union scale. The Supervisory Union contract is not settled yet, so we will revisit this position once that has been settled. Main expenses within this budget under contractual services, we have $5,200 for printing and binding, which is used to print the preliminary and actual tax bills, $3,750 under professional services, which is used for instruments of taking during the tax title process. And under postage, $32,500, which is used to mail the tax bills. We mail approximately 65,000 bills a year. Total budget request for fiscal 2021 is $279,162, with $222,810 coming from tax levy, and $56,352 coming from a water and sewer transfer.
Thank you for that. The Finance Committee have any further comments?
I just wanted to add that we did look at the repair for furniture, which has been vacant, one of those items in the summation, and that there's two line items that were increased and decreased last year that we're continuing to monitoring as well.
Anything further from the Tax Collector?
I did what Kevin said. I think my staff, Dorothy Howard and Debbie Ruane, did a fabulous job, of course, under my direction. This year, we had one in tax title, so we continue to bring that money in, and we try not to spend it. Thank you.
Thank you. And our collection rate is phenomenal, too. 99 point something, right? Exactly. You can't ask for much better than that. And do we have any questions of the council? Counselor Chines?
Thank you. First of all, thank you very much, Ms. Kelly, for all the great work that your team does. Just a question, as we think about sort of the long term and kind of where you've been, you know, as sort of, you know, bill pay has become more electronic in so many different settings, and, you know, as you now hear, you know, sort of different organizations talk about going paperless in terms of billing, is that something that, over the long term, you'd see as an opportunity for Wakefield? And any sort of plans to look at that over the next year or two?
No.
Sorry?
I mean, we're happy with what we have now, and I know people would like to have emailed bills, but you can go onto Unipay, and you can schedule your payment, and you can see what the amount is. We do, it's difficult enough when we send out the bills through the U.S. Mail. There are a lot of returns, and if you don't have addresses that are current or non-deliverable, then it doesn't help you fluctuate when you have so many returns. In terms of emailing, it would have to be another process, and it would be another company that would do it, so you wouldn't really be saving anything if that's really what you're trying to do with it. But I'm sure just because that's the way to the future, that is something, yes, that we will probably do, but I haven't given it in a thought right now.
Got it.
Because it's working, what we're doing.
Yeah. And so Unipay, right now, that's not sort of a capability that they'd be able to offer. It would have to be like a separate...
Yes, you have, yes. You can contact another vendor, and then you have to, so there are ways that we could do it, but it will increase my budget.
Got it.
So I can look into it and see how much it would cost. Probably for next year, we can figure that out.
Yeah, no, and the reason I ask really is just to see, is there an opportunity, without diminishing the collection rate, you know, to look at saving some funds there? But, you know, given that you'd be talking about multiple vendors, if that does increase the cost, I mean, obviously, that's not something that I'd be interested in doing.
Oh, good.
But no, I appreciate, though, the research and thought into it.
Uh-huh, okay.
Thank you again for all the work that your department does. You do phenomenal work.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
And it's not the happiest bill to be writing, or making payment on, but...
We try to make it happy, but...
We appreciate it, yes. We try to be careful stewards of everything you collect. We can say that much.
I also make a comment, speaking of making it happy, I don't know if people caught your bill poem that went out just before the holidays.
You did, yes.
Points for creativity on that.
Well, no, I can't, well, it was Phyllis Hall, actually, who, I was on vacation several years ago, and my staff called, and they said, "Well, you're the Grinch." I said, "I am not a Grinch." And they said, "Yeah, you are. It's official. It's in the item." I said, "What?" And they sent it to me, that Phyllis had called me the Grinch because the real estate bills were issued before Christmas. So I said, "Oh, my gosh, now I have to think and write back and whatever." So anyway, we can't please everybody. Some don't like them early, some don't like them late, whatever. So anyway, Jen McDonald came down, because we had the Grinch on the door of the town hall, and we were telling her that story, and she went back upstairs. She came down, and she sent it to me, and I said, "Oh, that's fabulous." So she took everything we told her, and she was the artist behind it, so we'll give her credit.
So Jen McDonald is both a communications major and a laureate for Wakefield.
But we thought it was, we went with it.
Thank you.
So with that, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the Tax Collector Department budget in the amount of $279,162 for tax year fiscal year 2021. Move of Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Chines. Any further discussion? Seeing then, the motion before you is the approval of the Tax Collector budget in the amount of $279,162. All those in favor? Vote of seven to zero. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you again for your work. Next, item 8C, budget number eight. This is the Assessors Department budget. Mr. Gill.
Next budget is the Assessors budget. We have Victor Santinello here for the, Victor is our town assessor. Victor and his crew do a great job for us also. We are recommending a budget increase for fiscal 2021 of $5,927. This increase is all in personal services and is contractual and negotiated increases. There is one position within this budget that falls under the supervisory contract that we will revisit once that contract is settled. Main expenses within this budget, under the professional services line item, $22,000, which is used mainly for outside appraisal services, outside personal property services, and expert witnesses as needed for ATB cases. Total budget request for fiscal 2021 is $242,671.
Thank you, Mr. Gill.
Finance Committee have anything to add?
The only comment I had with this was kind of that balancing act that I mentioned earlier in the summation. We had a couple of line items, printing in the stationary that maybe, you know, instead of decreasing other areas, that it could be, it could decrease in other areas, like the auto allowance, just to kind of compensate for those increases.
Thank you. Anything from our town assessor?
Nothing.
And you were here a few meetings ago and answered a lot of questions for us on that, so I think we have a pretty good understanding of...
I'm easy peasy, won't spend a nickel unless I can make a buck.
Fair enough. Any questions or comments of the council? Seeing then, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the Town Assessors Department budget. Moved by Counselor Dinoco, seconded by Vice Chair Santos. The motion before you is the approval of a budget of $242,671 for the Assessors Department for fiscal year 2021. All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote of seven to zero. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Assessor, as well. We appreciate it. Moving on next is item 8D. Actually, two budgets here. We'll start with budget number nine, Town Clerk Department.
Yes. Budget nine, the Town Clerk's budget. We have Betsy Sharon here. Betsy handles both the Town Clerk budget and the election and registration budget. For the Town Clerk's budget, we're recommending an increase of $9,000. There's an increase in personal services of $5,560, which is for negotiated and contractual increases. I will point out that the Town Clerk position follows the supervisory contract and will be revisited once that contract's been settled. Under contractual services, there's been an increase of $2,900, which is the net result of several increases and decreases, and those were based on both current and prior year usage. The same holds true for materials and supplies. Major expenses within this budget, printing and binding, $14,000, which is used to print the town bylaws, codebooks, dog license, but is also used to bind old public records, permanent records, some dating back to the mid-1800s. When those are sent out, they are very expensive to have rebound. We do collect revenue within the Town Clerk's budget. We collect almost $70,000 a year in various licenses and fees. The total budget request for 2021 is $224,462, and Betsy and her clerk do a tremendous job hittling that office.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. Finance Committee?
The only line item that we had a question on with this was the postage. It seems to be a little bit under budget over the past few years, so maybe it could be increased in the future.
Thank you for that. Town Clerk Sharon, do you have anything to add to the...
Oh, no. Thank you, lucky stars. Not a thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of the council relative to the Town Clerk's budget? All right, seeing then, the motion before you is the approval of the Town Clerk's budget in the amount of $224,462 for fiscal year 2021.
Second.
Moved by Counselor May, seconded by Vice Chair Santos. Moved by Counselor May, seconded by Vice Chair Santos. Any further discussion? With the motion before you, the approval of the budget in the amount of 224,462 for Town Clerk's department. All those in favor? Vote a seven to zero. The motion carries unanimously. I did want to take a moment here to also do a public service announcement. Town Clerk Sharon has done a phenomenal job relative to our dogs and our licensing, and we have residents that are both two and four-legged here in Wakefield.
They are.
And I actually was in today to see Town Clerk Sharon along with Dublin, my puggle, who turned 16 today, so she got her license. I'm very proud, proud of that.
Some blink.
But I did want to say that, you know, we have Valentine's Day coming up. I mean, this is like, this rivals, you know, Tiffany in terms of the quality here.
I know, and I'm glad we went silver to ship. We change the color and the shape every year, and that is perfect.
Yeah, so it's silver and it's great, and it's $10 for any dogs that are spayed or neutered. It's required. You do not need to bring your dog to town hall, although they enjoy the visitors. But if you could do that.
It's $20 if they're intact. $20 if they're intact, the dog.
And $20, yes, so if they're spayed and neutered, $10. $20 if they're intact. And I should also point out that when you're there, also stop by the DPW window because DPW has their 2020 Scoop the Poop pledge form. And this is for any pet parents to sign, and it's your commitment that you will pick up after your dog. And it might sound trivial, but it's not. It's not just aesthetics, but it also impacts things like our stormwater and just the quality of our environment. And when you sign the pledge, you will be given this gift, which is a very cool poop bag holder, along with poop bags. So there's no excuse to not clean up after your pooch. So I would encourage everyone to first stop at Town Clerk's window, followed by DPW window, and make sure you take care of our four-legged friends. Thank you.
So is it safe to say that their business is your business? Betsy, you don't have to answer that. Thinking business.
Very good.
So thank you very much, and you have a solid Facebook promotion going on, too. When dogs come in, it's really, it really gets the word out, which is really important. So thank you for using social media. Yes, indeed. So with that, we'll move on to the next budget. That is budget number 10, election and registration. Turn over to Mr. Gill.
Yes, election and registration. This budget, we're recommending a decrease of $3,300 from the current year. We decrease the personal services line item $3,800, which is based on current and prior year usage, which is used mainly for the census workers, where a lot of that work is being done by in-house staff now. We increase the postage line item $500 due to the additional election that we anticipate in fiscal '21. Main expenses within this budget, under personal services, $17,100, which is used mainly for the census workers. Under contractual services, there's a professional services line item, $10,000. We use that mainly with a company called LHS, which helps us with the census mailing, with the printing of the town ballots, and the maintenance of the voting machines. The total budget request for fiscal 2021 is $37,700.
Finance committee have anything to add?
The only thing that I would like to add is that we did also discuss that there's three other election budgets, that there's a possibility of combining these under one in the future.
Anything further, Town Clerk?
Yeah, I don't understand that comment. I barely heard it, but combining all three elections of...
Combining all three election budgets into one budget, I believe, was...
Yes, that's correct.
...was considering?
Yes.
Maybe just for what those three budgets are and sort of what's in each of them, just so that we're all speaking from the same...
Why don't we take, so why don't we look at what we're currently looking at and what may be something suggested going forward?
Betsy to the table, perhaps?
Yes.
I can jump in. I think when we've talked about combining budgets in the past...
So the Town Clerk handles the Town Clerk function, the election expense for the elections, and the election registration. So we may want to look at one, putting that all into one budget under the Town Clerk, just for ease and, you know, streamlining, kind of like we've done with some other items we're going to put into maybe the town council budget. You know, we had the sealer separate. Why should we have the sealer separate every year? Put that in here. So that's kind of the discussion, as we talk with the finance committee about making things, you know, more streamlined and more easy and presentable. So that's kind of the discussion that's happening.
So just to clarify that, so the three budgets, so the Town Clerk budget that we just approved, the elections budget that we did two weeks ago, which is the cost of actually running each of the three elections we expect next year. And then this budget...
Election and registration.
This budget, which covers, again, the registration, the census. That's, okay.
And that's just a discussion.
Yep. That would not impact, obviously, fiscal year 2021. That would be something that would be discussed potentially for fiscal year 2022, but it doesn't really change anything. It's just consolidating under one. Counselor Smith-Gallant? Further questions? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the election and registration budget in the amount of $37,700 for fiscal year 2021. Moved by Counselor Chines, seconded by Counselor May. Any further discussion? Seeing none of the vote before you is the approval of the election and registration budget in the amount of $37,700 for fiscal year 2021. All those in favor? Vote a seven to zero. Carries unanimously. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We appreciate it. Thank you, everyone. Moving on next to item 8F. This is budget number 14. This is the planning board budget. Mr. Gill.
We are requesting level funding for fiscal 2021. Main expenses within this budget, the cost of the clerk, $4,800. We budget 24 meetings at $200 a meeting. The advertising line item, $2,500, which is used to advertise their meetings and for any bylaw changes that they may propose. The total budget request for 2021 is $12,975.
Does Finance Committee have anything to add to this budget?
I don't have anything to add to this one.
Thank you. And do we have anyone from the planning board wishing to speak? Any questions from the council for Mr. Gill or Ms. DiGiamatista? All right, seeing none, I will entertain a motion for the approval of this budget as described. Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor May. Any further discussion? Seeing none, the motion before you is the approval of the planning board budget for fiscal year 2021 in the amount of $12,975. All those in favor? Vote a seven to zero. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you for that. We've got two more now. We have budget number 26, which is the Board of Health budget.
Yes, Board of Health budget. We have Ruth Clay here. Ruth is the town's health agent, and we also have members of the Board of Health here. We're requesting a total increase of $12,522 over the current year. This increase breaks down under personal services. There's an increase of $2,715, which is for a contractual and negotiated increase. Under contractual services, there's an increase of $8,158. This increase is all in the professional services line item. And this line item is to be part of the town's shared agreement with Melrose and Wakefield. This covers the salary of the health agent and two other full-time employees. There's also an increase in the mosquito control line item of $1,649. The total budget request for fiscal 2021 is $269,040.
And does Finance Committee have any comments?
There were two line items that have been vacant year over year, so we just discussed the possibility of those being taken off the budget in the future, if they're still needed.
Thank you. And does Board of Health have any comments? No. All right. With that, any questions of the council? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the budget as described by Mr. Gill. Moved by Counselor May, seconded by Counselor Dinaco. Any further discussion on the motion? The motion before you is the approval of the Board of Health budget for fiscal year 2021 in the amount of $269,040. All those in favor? Vote a seven to zero. The motion carries unanimously. And while we have the Board of Health here, I thought it might be a good opportunity. There's been, obviously, a lot of discussion of late about the coronavirus, and people hear about that. But I think just since we're in the middle of flu season, having some good health tips and ways to try to avoid spreading germs and keeping us all healthy during this season would be helpful, certainly. We have the right resource for it. So with that, I'll turn over to Director Clay.
Well, shameless plug for getting a flu shot. It's not too late. The flu is here, as it normally is. The good news is that the vaccine is pretty much dead-on with the viruses, the flu viruses that we have this year, so it's very effective. And if you call our department at 246-6375, we can let you know when the public health nurse is in, and you can come down to get a flu shot. So, moving on to other viruses, coronavirus. So there's a lot in the news, and we did, did the press release go out this afternoon?
I don't know.
Okay, well...
You sent it to me.
Yes, I wrote a press release, and if it didn't go out this afternoon, it'll go out tomorrow morning. The public health nurse and I are constantly getting updates. The coronavirus, the coronavirus itself is not a new virus. This particular strain, which they've called the novel coronavirus, very creative, is new. It was just discovered a few weeks ago at this point. So actually, there's a huge amount of information known about it in a very short amount of time. We have access to a weekly conference call with the Centers for Disease Control every Monday afternoon that the two of us sit in on. There are no cases in Massachusetts at this point that we know of. There are in, there are, oh geez, 26 states that have cases that are being investigated. Five have been positive, 31 have been negative, and the rest are pending. The other piece of good news, and I find this really astounding, how quickly things are happening, but the CDC has already come up with a test kit. So that is being manufactured, and the specs for it are being given to private manufacturers so that it can get ramped up very quickly and then given to everybody, or the labs across the country. They're actually working on a vaccine already, and they expect that to be ready for early human testing in three months. We do have a very robust emergency dispensing site plan that, interestingly, we just exercised a few weeks ago. So I'm very comfortable that if the coronavirus turns into something like H1N1 10 years ago, that we're prepared as, and the CDC website, which is www.cdc.gov, right on their homepage is a link to the coronavirus information. Very fast-moving information, so it changes literally from day to day. For most immediate information, I would suggest people looking at that website, and we'll continue to have information on our website and press releases, you know, as it relates to how it relates to Wakefield.
Thank you. And there are a number of things that people can do just to avoid the flu generally, or if that were to infiltrate our area, just good practices.
Get a flu shot. Wash your hands. Cover your mouth. When you cough. All the time. I don't care.
Any other questions, comments? Well, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Bud.
Thank you for that. Can you say the telephone number one more time?
Oh, our phone number?
Yeah. Great, and your website?
I mean, it's the town's website, www.wakefield MA.us, and then go into Departments and Health.
Perfect. And if I had known it was Bring a Picture Day, I would have brought the picture of Laurel giving me a flu shot, which I'm really happy to know that they were so effective this year. So thank you and your team.
Thank you.
And with that, too, obviously, if things change, our website, it'll be front homepage, and we'll get the word out. Anyone who is not yet subscribed to our email, you can get email alerts through the town. So if there are developments that warrant notifying the public further, we certainly have the capacity to do that very quickly with real-time information.
The good news is the public health nurse and I have been around long enough that we did H1N1, so we're very familiar. You know, we're ready. That's what emergency planning is all about.
Well, thank you, Director Clay, and thank you, Board of Health. And we appreciate your coming in and giving us that information, which is very helpful. And our final budget this evening is the Medicare budget. This is budget number 40. I'll turn over to Mr. Gill.
Medicare budget, we're requesting an increase of $37,490 over the current year budget. This budget is used to pay the town's portion of the Medicare tax. This is a salary-based tax for employees hired after 1986 at a tax rate of 1.45%. I estimated a salary increase to the fiscal 2021 budget of approximately $2.6 million. That times the tax rate brings up to that $37,490. The total budget request is $793,000 even.
Finance committee have any comment?
No comments on this budget.
Questions of the council? This is pretty straightforward. Mr. Gill, it is what it is, basically. There's not a whole lot of room to do anything with it, unfortunately. Thank you on that. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the Medicare budget as described. Got a competition here. We'll give it to Counselor May, seconded by Vice Chair Santos. Any further discussion? Seeing none, the motion before you is the approval of the Medicare budget in the amount of $793,000 for fiscal year 2021. All those in favor? Vote a seven to zero. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. DiGiamatista. I think this is the last night. You'll be joining us, right? Because we've gone through all your budgets now.
Yeah, I think there's probably a few more.
Couple more.
All right, a couple more. All right, so thank you again for tonight, and we'll see you next time. Thank you always, Mr. Gill, as well. We appreciate it. Moving on, the next item on the agenda, item number nine is licenses. We have several this evening. The first is item 9A, the Class II application. The applicant is seeking renewal of a Class II license for 2020. This is Fehe Auto Sales, located at 28 New Salem Street. The application is contained within your packets and available online. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of this application. Moved by Counselor Dinaco, seconded by Vice Chair Santos. Any discussion? Seeing none, the motion before you is the approval of the Class II license for Fehe Auto Sales. All those in favor? Vote a seven to zero. The motion carries unanimously. Item 9A2 is a request for a renewal of a Class II license for J&amp;A Autobody located at 1273 Main Street here in Wakefield. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of that renewal. Moved by Counselor May, seconded by Vice Chair Santos. Any discussion? Seeing none, the motion before you is the approval of the renewal of a Class II license for J&amp;A Autobody located at 1273 Main Street. All those in favor? I vote a seven to zero. The motion carries unanimously. Item 9A3 is a request for the approval of a new Class I license for Albrecht Buick GMC of Wakefield, located at 614 North Avenue. I'll remind those watching at home in the council. This is next to Subaru Wakefield. It used to be the old Volvo dealer. When they presented before us several months ago, they indicated they thought they were in talks with a major company, and in fact, they have clearly worked that out. So they're seeking to have approval by us. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the new license, Class I license, as requested. Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Dinaco. Any discussion? The motion before you is the approval of the Class I license, a new license for Albrecht Buick GMC of Wakefield at 614 North Avenue. All those in favor? Vote a seven to zero. The motion carries unanimously, and we wish them good luck. Item 9B is a request for a one-day liquor license. Again, this is in your packets. This is a request for a fundraiser some of you may have heard of before. It is the Blossoms at the BB fundraiser on May 2nd from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of that license. Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor May. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, they're asking for a 30-day license with the use of the alcohol for one day. Can we make that part of the motion if there is a 30-day?
So with that amendment, moved by Counselor Dinaco, seconded by Counselor Chines. So the motion before you then is the approval of the one-day liquor license but allowing the 30-day window.
Correct.
As is...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
As is normal procedure for such events. With that, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Vote a seven to zero. The motion carries unanimously. Vote of seven to zero, the motion carries unanimously. Item number 10 is the Wakefield sewer bond and I am required by statute, by, by statute to read the bond in its entirety onto the record. So, if you don't, if you haven't heard my voice enough already tonight, good time to hit mute on the TV. I will entertain, you know, Mr. Mayo, should I first read it and then seek a motion or shall I seek a motion and read it?
I think that you can, uh, read it and then seek the motion.
All right.
Read better.
So, the, uh, bond before you is that the sale of the $188,397.50 sewer bond of the town dated February 24th, 2020 to Massachusetts Water Resources Authority, here and after the authority, is hereby approved by the town treasurer or, or other appropriate town official is authorized to execute on behalf of the town a loan agreement and financial assistance agreement with the authority with respect to the bond. The bond shall be payable without interest on February 15th of the years and in the principal amounts as follows. Year 2021, installment $18,839.75. Year 2026, and, I'm sorry. Uh, year 2022, installment $18,839.75. Year 2023, installment $18,839.75. Year 2024, installment $18,839.75. Year 2025, installment $18,839.75. Year 2026, installment $18,839.75. Year 2027, installment $18,839.75. Year 2028, installment $18,839.75. Year 2029, installment $18,839.75. And year 2030, if you haven't guessed it already, $18,839.75. So with that, I will entertain a motion for, uh, the approval of that bond as I have just read.
Same move.
Second.
Moved by Counselor, uh, May, seconded by Counselor Dinaco. Any discussion? So the motion before you is that the sale of the, I'm just kidding, won't read it again, what I just read for the sewer bond. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Vote of seven to zero, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you for, for your indulgence. Item number 11, these are some zoning bylaw change referrals to the planning board. So, we'll begin with item number 11A. The applicant here seeks zoning bylaw change affecting 102 now, New Salem Street. Uh, and this would ente, involve a referral to the planning board. So I will?
I'll make a motion to approve, but I'd like some discussion once it comes down to it.
So I'll entertain a motion for, for the, um, approval to advances on to, uh, refer it to the, the planning board. It's, that motion is made by Counselor Dinaco to have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Chines. Discussion.
Thank you.
Counselor Dinaco.
Mr. Chair, through you to Mr. McGreal. The property in question, um, right now, do you know the square footage on the property?
I don't have the exact on that, Mr. Dinaco, no.
Okay, so, so?
It references the map and lot, so you can, you can derive that from the assessors' records.
Um, I, I, I'm going to vote to send this to town meeting, but I do have, uh, questions, but they'll have to wait then to town meeting floor.
About half an acre.
Half an acre? Okay, thank you, Mr., uh, Mr. McGreal.
Mr. Mayo, I, I know that it's in the packets, but could you maybe just give a little bit of an overview?
Yes, I think what, what happens is whenever anybody, um, is requesting a zoning change on their property, okay, one of the, uh, procedure is, is that it is, um, it is sent over, the request is sent to the town council and the town council shall, the key word being shall, I'm getting Mullins checked for this week.
Yeah.
The town council shall refer it to the planning board and that's where there'll be initial discussion. The planning board then has a time under the statute to make a recommendation to town meeting and then it is also discussed fully at town meeting. So really, with, with all due respect to the town council, our role tonight is really kind of perfunctory. We shall, and we'll turn it to the planning board for more substantive talk.
Okay. Thank you for that. We have a motion on the floor that's been seconded. Further discussion on this motion? Counselor Chines?
Good, thank you. I recognize that this is sort of a perfunctory motion, but, um, if I could just ask a question and I'm sure this will come up in the planning board and ultimately town meeting discussions, but, um, curious why sort of the request is to redesignate this as general residence? Obviously it's split between two, um, zone, you know, two, uh, two, two zones, uh, in the town and so understand the need to clean that up, but we would be talking about a, effectively moving it to a third zone that isn't currently in that neighborhood and so, you know, through you, Mr. Chair, I don't know if Mr. McGreal could speak maybe just for 30 seconds about that?
I think we, we, we can. I think we should be clear that, you know, Mr. McGreal, you're not here to speak to us tonight, so I understand if you're not prepared to answer that question. If you are able to answer that question and are able to indulge the council, I invite you to do so.
For a moment, if you might.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Members of the board, um, I represent, uh, Mr. Tavano, who's a private citizen that owns that property. Uh, as I mentioned to Mr. Dinaco, the property is approximately half an acre. Uh, to familiarize yourself with this property, if you're heading towards Salem's, if you, I'm sorry, if you're heading towards, um, if, if you're at the convenience store at the intersection of Salem and New Salem and then you head down, uh, New Salem towards this, towards downtown, uh, towards Fahy Tire in that direction, um, you will notice that there's a, a single-family home that some newly constructed on this, on the, on kind of the periphery of the industrial district. The property that's owned by Mr. Tavano was right next door to that. There's a red, old-type home there that's had just a, a bunch of different types of uses over the years. Uh, oil companies have gone in there and there's an awkwardness to that lot because currently, uh, as you have mentioned, Mr. Chines, it's a split lot, uh, split zoned lot, that half of that lot is zoned, single residents, and half of it is zoned, industrial. So, Mr. Tavano, you know, wanted to look at various options for what to do with that property. It's a very odd, um, dynamic, that split, because, um, single-family and two-family houses are not allowed in the industrial district period. You can't even get any type of variance. So, he's really struggled with this property. Um, he didn't buy it too long ago. He bought it as an investment. He talked about the possibility of doing a larger development or an industrial-type development, commercial development, multifamily, and, you know, I, I kind of said, "Look, you're really in a transition area here because you've got single-family, you're leading into industrial where part of it is industrial. On the other end of the, of New Salem Street, uh, towards Fahy Tire is general residence." And, and so he thought it would be a happy medium to just zone this general residence and build a two-family house. It's a very, you know, large lot. General resident lots are only required to have 80 feet of frontage and 8,000 square feet. Uh, this, as I've mentioned, is, is half an acre, so it's about 20,000 square feet. So, he as a citizen thought that this would be a good compromise and a good use. Uh, as a matter of fact, he might actually even add on to the house that's already there and then convert it into a two-family. Um, so quite honestly and frankly, you know, we think it fits within the zoning scheme when you look at both ends of New Salem Street and, uh, Mr. Tavano thought that it's a reasonable use considering everything else that's going on in that area. Uh, basically, his neighbor is Taylor Rental. So, I hope that helps to give a little context.
That does, thank you. I appreciate the context.
And to be clear, this is not a substantive vote, this is a procedural vote. This moves us on to the next step in the merits of, of any sort of bylaw, uh, zoning changes would be, uh, addressed at the appropriate time. Yes, so we're neither endorsing nor, nor condoning. All right, so with that, uh, we have a motion that has been seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, the motion before you is, uh, the approval, uh, for the applicant seeking a zoning bylaw change affecting 102 New Salem Street to be referred on to the planning board. All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote of seven to zero, the motion carries unanimously. Item 11B is, uh, similar in nature. We have here an applicant seeking a zoning bylaw change affecting properties on Main Street, Avon Street, and Chestnut Street. Uh, again, this would be, uh, for a referral to the planning board, um, as well. So with that, um, I'll entertain a motion to allow for, um, this to move forward in advance to the planning board.
Same move.
Moved by Counselor Dinaco, seconded by Counselor Chines. Any discussion or questions? All right, seeing none, the motion before you then is, uh, the approval of, um, the request to, to move on a zoning bylaw change affecting properties on Main Street, Avon Street, and Chestnut Street to, to be considered by the planning board. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have a vote of six to zero, um, uh, right, so, and, and Counselor Smith-Galvin recuses herself, so with a vote of six to zero, the motion carries with the one recusal for the record. All right, item 11C, it, um, here we have an applicant seeking a bylaw, um, a zoning bylaw change to section 193-31 L&amp;M, uh, referred to the plan, and this would again be a referral to the planning board, um, and a vote is required of this body. So with that, I'll entertain a motion, um, as I've described.
Same move.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor May. The motion before you is to advance the applicant's request for a zoning bylaw change to section, uh, 190-31 L&amp;M to the planning board. All those in favor?
Mr. Chair, sorry. Quick question and I'm going to ask Mr. Mayo to, uh, play the role of, uh, Council Mullen, uh, again today. Just a, a logistical question, does the Board of Appeals already have this, this authority? Uh, you know, in terms of their ability to grant variances?
Yes.
So?
Correct? Mr. McGreal? Correct.
On, on?
On L&amp;M?
On L&amp;M. They could do it, they could potentially do it through a variance. This is, this is requir, requesting a special permit component.
Okay. And, again, help me understand sort of the rationale for?
Um, I, my opinion is that a special permit, uh, has a different threshold, um, upon appeal, basically.
Okay.
Well, special permit is, is more for the scheme of an entire development. So this, these special permits that, uh, these provisions of, of amendment, uh, and with me tonight is Mr. DeBella, uh, who's the president of C and CEO of the, of the Savings Bank in Wakefield. In the last, um, uh, bylaw that has already been forwarded, uh, the Savings Bank is one of the sponsors of that, um, amendment proposal along with another property owner in the area. Uh, and the Savings Bank, uh, is also the proponent of this article that you're referring to as a property affected. Currently, um, and I think that this will play out during the planning board, uh, discussions, when you look at a planning scheme for a financial institution, uh, and where they're allowed in Wakefield, um, considering, uh, their impacts on the area, um, we believe it's appropriate that a special permit standard should be, uh, put into the permitting process for them, uh, in the areas that are allowed, uh, to allow, uh, various relief that they normally wouldn't be allowed under the bylaw. Um, it affects the Savings Bank and I should, uh, also point out that it's not only the Savings Bank and another property owner that are proposing this, there's also 20 resident taxpayers that are proposing, uh, this bylaw change and, and supporting it. The Savings Bank is particularly interested in this, um, because they are a leading financial institution in the town. Uh, other financial institutions would also benefit from this, but as far as they're concerned, uh, they do plan on doing some alterations to their property. Uh, they recently purchased the property at 3 Chestnut Street, which is the old Hots on Insurance property, um, and they plan on, um, raising that property and building an addition to their bank. Um, and this type of, uh, bylaw change is really critical, um, for the possibilities of that happening. But again, it's not solely for them. Uh, it would benefit, uh, all other financial institutions in the town, which are a significant part of the, the downtown community.
Counselor Dinaco?
Just by looking at this though, right now, it's extending behind the li, uh, library. Is that changing part of the zoning that exists exa, on the library now?
Are you talking about the prior article, Paul?
No, this one here.
No, the one now?
Oh, the prior one. I'm sorry, never mind, we can't go back. I'm sorry. Never mind. Two different articles. Sorry.
If I can quickly address, Mr. Chair, it's, it's?
Of course.
Yeah, this is not specifically just addressing the Savings Bank's properties. When, when, when they acquired this property, we looked at that zoning district line. There's a line that designates between the, um, business district and the, uh, general residence district. It's very awkwardly laid out. It creates split lots from Avon Street through Chestnut Street. So, the lots that are being changed here are all of those lots that are kind of partially zoned, general residence and, um, and, and also zoned, um, business. Right. Uh, the library is included because for some reason, the, the whole rear end of the library is zoned, general residence. When we, when I originally presented this to the town planner and the building inspector, um, the town planner, uh, in particular suggested that we should change these lines to make them consistent instead of, uh, to try to avoid these split lots in the downtown area.
Thank you.
So I hope that helps give some context.
Thank you for that. And, and again, this is, we're not making a substantive determination here, we're simply advancing it on and it's, uh, we're actually compelled to do so. So with that, uh, we have a motion that has been seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, then the motion before you is, uh, to, um, advance the applicant's request of a zoning bylaw change to section 190-31 L&amp;M to the planning board for, for the review. All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote of seven to zero, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you for your time.
How do you use myself, actually?
Oh, I'm sorry. So, the vote is, the vote is six, uh, six to zero with one recusal. Counselor Smith-Galvin recusing herself on that as well. All right, item number 12 on the agenda? Sorry? We're good? Item number 12 on the agenda is, um, vision and value statement. Counselor Chines, over, in recent months, has, uh, been working through, um, some preliminary thoughts relative to, um, a vision and value statement for, uh, for the town that he's presenting tonight, a, a potential framework relative to that. We had had discussion, um, at our, uh, town council retreat a number of months ago relative to, uh, the absence of a vision, a vision and value statement and just kind of talking about some more long-range or longer-term planning, um, on the part of, of this body to help to move the, the town forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to Counselor Chines for his presentation.
Uh, well, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair and, and thank you to, uh, you know, all the folks on the council and, and, uh, staff at Town Hall, uh, many of whom I've spoken whom with, uh, individually about some of the thoughts and ideas that, uh, that have prompted, uh, what we'll be talking through today. So the, you know, the impetus for this really came out of, I, I think, a number of conversations and a number of questions that I've gotten from residents over the last year or so. Um, one of those conversations, one of those comments that I get more often than anything else is, "Where are we going as a town? What's the vision? What is the, what are, what are our goals as a community?" Um, and one of the things I continued to hear was, you know, "We don't have that clarity" and some of the folks that are constituents, uh, don't have that understanding of where we are trying to go as a town. And so this is really intended to be sort of a first step to try to put some of that clarity, uh, in place for our residents. I'll also tell you, a number of us, uh, were able to go to the Mass Municipal Association annual conference this week and in many of the sessions, when we talked through sort of success factors for communities, one of the things that I also heard consistently was the importance of having a vision, the importance of having clarity around what it is that you're aiming for in terms of making sure that you can be successful. And so that's really sort of the motivating, uh, thoughts behind this today. Um, I don't have the clicker, but, uh, oop.
Here we are.
Thank you. Advance to our first slide. So, um, just putting this in context, oops.
Left side, there's an on-off.
Ah.
Yep.
Yes.
Yep.
There we go. Um, so where does this fit in with the process? So, uh, what you see on the screen i- is really a very simple, um, you know, kind of map of sort of where I would envision a vision statement sitting for the organization. And I really see that as the foundation for a comprehensive planning process for, for the community. Something that then helps us inform our strategic goals, which we set annually for[1731.48] that then helps us inform our strategic goals, which we set annually for the town, and which we did have our offsite to do, and then also cascading down to our fiscal year budget every year, which obviously we're in that process now. You know, ultimately, having some clarity around our vision and values will help us develop more clearly articulated strategic goals and budget priorities. It gives us that foundation to be able to have those conversations in a more meaningful way. And I think probably more importantly, it also gives us a framework to think about how do we evaluate competing priorities. So obviously, as a community, you know, when we're setting the budget, we do have to make difficult choices. We can't always do everything that we want to. There are only so many things that we can focus on at a time. And so the vision and value statement really is intended to help sort of guide us in terms of making some of those trade-offs that we need to make. Ultimately, on this next slide, which as it's translated, looks a little bit funny with the lines going through, you know, but this sort of reinforces, I think, in some more detail that, that cascading that we talked about on the prior page. I would envision us developing a vision and value statement, maybe that we revisit as a community every few years, using that to develop a process where we document our annual strategic goals every year in the May-June timeframe as we're starting the next fiscal year beginning July 1st. And having that cascade into both the budget process, making sure that what we set as our goals are reflected in the budget, and also making sure that that cascades down to the work that we do as a town council, developing a performance management and review process for the town administrator, and setting the expectation that that also cascades down to the town administrator's direct reports and department heads. So what do we mean by a vision and value statement? Well, this is just on this next slide, an example of one community that I think has done this fairly well, the community of Ashland, which did this about 18 months ago. They've developed separate statements, statements of community values, which you see reflected on the left-hand side of the page, looking for a community to be smart, which is an interesting term for how they've described it. But I think what they mean by that is taking into account, you know, again, both long-term and short-term impacts of their decisions, being thoughtful about the decisions that they make, being safe, both physical and also emotional well-being of their residents, and being sustainable, both in terms of natural resources as well as financial resources. You see the vision statement on the right. Purpose of sharing this is not to say that this is appropriate for us. We've got a whole process to go through, but, you know, just to point out that other communities are doing this. And I would say, flipping to the next slide, we've actually done some of this work in Wakefield as well. So what's on the screen now is the vision and mission statement from the Wakefield Public Schools. And I really do credit Superintendent Lyons and his predecessor in the school committee for pulling this together, having gone through the budget process with the school department a couple of years, being on finance committee prior to joining the town council. You can see the thread that they pulled through of looking at their vision statement and figuring out what their priorities were, and ultimately defining their budget. So what I'd like to propose from here is a process that we'd follow over the next few months to put something in place, and the process is on the screen right now. Really four steps to the process. First, having a brainstorming process to identify some ideas, drafting one or two alternative statements, and I'll talk about each of these in turn, making sure we've got an opportunity to solicit public comment on those alternatives when they're developed, and then ultimately getting this body to, to approve something. So starting with brainstorming, what I would like to see, and what I'd like us to consider as a council, is having really a two-step process to generate ideas over the next couple of months. The first is doing something similar to what we did with the transit survey that Jen McDonald and Mr. Mayo put together this summer with a lot of support from Counselor Butt as well, by having a public survey that's available both online, you know, promoted by social media, by the website, the kiosk, in the item, as well as a paper survey that would allow people to share some of their ideas on some questions. And I think the intent here would be, this would be directed to a wide variety of stakeholders. Obviously, our residents would be a key stakeholder. I think we do want to hear from town employees as well, other folks in boards and commissions in town, business owners and the like. I think the goal here is to really get as much input as possible from as many people as possible that are part of this community. At the same time, what I, what I think would be valuable is having the opportunity for folks to offer feedback in person as well in a, in a public session. You know, my vision for this would be, we'd start out with sort of an introduction to the purpose, a review of some focus questions, give people a chance to walk around and do sort of a sticky note exercise, jot down when we ask, you know, certain questions, what that means to them, put them on, on paper, and give folks a chance to kind of mill about and have some discussions. And then bring, bring the group back together to review some of the feedback and comments that we heard, give people a chance to discuss more live. In terms of the types of questions, I think both on the survey and in this brainstorming session, that we'd want to focus on, you see some of them listed on the, on the page here, fairly open-ended, but really intentionally open-ended. We, you know, I don't think we want to start this process with a presumption of what the vision is. I think we really do want to build a vision, a vision from the ground up based on the feedback that we hear. So some of the questions that, you know, I think would make sense, you know, why did you choose to live or work in Wakefield? Why would you recommend our community? What makes Wakefield special? What are we known for, or should we be known for outside of our community? What do we want Wakefield to be known for in 20 years? What do we want it to look like in 20 years? Certainly, there's been a lot of development in town, and that prompts a lot of discussion in the community. So what do we think the community should be in 20 years? What are the challenges that we're facing? What do we think we'll be facing in the future? How would you like to see the community address those challenges? And also, what do people expect from us? What are the values that residents and other constituents in town want to see reflected in town government and in their, their leaders? So next step, I don't know if there are any questions here. I can continue on to the next step and open it up, whatever.
This might be a natural break if anyone does have any questions. Thus far, if not, Counselor Chines can continue on. We can certainly have questions at the end as well. All right, seeing that, why don't we keep going?
So next steps, once, once we brainstorm some ideas and collect some of this feedback, the next step would be to draft really one to two alternative statements that are a little bit more focused for people to react to. Here, I would see forming a committee to, to do that work comprised of 14 members, a couple from this council, members from a number of different boards and commissions in town, including the school committee, the Planning Board, the Board of Health, the Finance Committee, Cultural Council, Human Rights Commission, Council on Aging and Historic Commission. I'd also like to see sort of some representation from a couple of groups outside of town government, specifically the Chamber of Commerce, to make sure we do have that perspective of our business owners, folks that may not be able to serve on some of these other commissions, as well as the Council of Churches, given the work that they do, really addressing some of the social needs that we see in the community, and some of the work that they do, you know, bringing together communities there. Obviously, the town administrator, we'd be looking for a lot of support and wisdom from Mr. Mayo, our communications manager, Jen McDonald, I think would be a good person to add, and then other staff as sort of we need as we go through this process. Any thoughts, questions on that? So again, idea would be, they would come out with one or two alternatives that we would then bring out for public comment. So I think similar to, you know, the, the way that we've communicated some of the efforts we've made over the last couple of months, you know, having the, you know, the draft statement or statements available on the website, at the library, Town Hall, the senior center, promoting via social media, the website, the item, and so forth, the opportunity for people to give feedback, this time in a more focused way towards those specific, those specific drafts. We'd then have a vote by town council for approval and publication, and in a few years, you know, certainly at least from sort of the middle of the process, kind of start the process again, just to revisit the vision and values and make sure they're still consistent with where we want to go. So in terms of next steps, what I'd like to propose for this council, certainly pending the, the group's consent, is putting together sort of the survey component of this, the online and paper-based surveys over the next few weeks, and schedule a public brainstorming session to at least start with the idea generation component of this. You know, simultaneous to that, starting to identify the folks from each of the boards and committees represented on the working group that would work on the vision statement, to make sure we've got those folks in place. And ultimately, trying to put together an effort where we'd be able to maybe have something ready for approval and discussion within the town council in the April-May timeframe, so that we've got something in place prior to the next fiscal year and the next planning process that would kick off then. So with that, that's all I had. Again, happy to answer any questions, take any feedback or thoughts that any of our colleagues here on the council have.
First off, Counselor Chines, thank you for your work on this. I know that you've spent a lot of time and met with a lot of people, so thank you for putting this together for the council. Does anyone have any questions, comments, ideas, thoughts? Counselor Butt?
Sure. So, this is great, Jonathan. Thank you for putting so much time into it. My one feedback from when Steve and Jen and I did the transportation survey, we had over 250 people respond, because it was so, it was a lot of, like, chews. It wasn't a lot of text writing, and I would suggest looking at that. So, you know, do you take the bus? Do you take the train? I was filling the bubble, and so people literally did it on their phone, waiting for the tea. I just, I like all the questions you're asking, but people writing essays on, you know, why they chose Wakefield is a little tougher than if we give them choices, have another there, but, you know, the like, the schools, my job, my family. So that's my suggestion, and I'm happy to work with you on that. I do a lot of surveys. It's not, you know, scientific, but I think to make it as user-friendly and able for people on smartphones to use is helpful.
Absolutely, and I'd certainly appreciate sort of the help with that. I think that's a great idea.
Another question. Counselor Dinoco.
Thank you. Jonathan, you did a very good job on this. It's easy to follow through on what you're trying to propose here. My only concern in after sitting on the school committee's vision statement process, I think April's gonna be too soon. I would prefer to see this go to November. I'd rather get your information that you're looking for put together and then compiled, and then giving it a little bit longer time for people to make comment. I'd rather get the 5% instead of the 1%, okay, out there making input on this. So as Maureen just said, you said 250. I'd like to see 500 people respond. Get a little bit more, because we're looking for a vision statement.
Yep.
We're looking for input from the people, okay? Having it come in in April, I think we're just rushing it too fast. I mean, we have, we've waited all this time.
Fair point.
Okay, so if we want to do this, we want to do it right, I would feel better if we just pushed it to November. Take the time, get all the information, do all the work that you're stating here, and then come up with some ideas that you could present to the council. That's my own comment.
I think that's, I think that makes sense. I mean, the goal here is for this to be participatory. It is for it to be sort of a grassroots effort. You know, I think if we end up at a place where, you know, the seven of us on the council are putting something together, then that's, I don't think we've, we've done our job in that case. So that, I'm certainly amenable to stretching out the timeframe. Not so much to get started. I do want to put some urgency around getting started, but certainly to put the endpoint a little later.
Completion was what I was dealing with. I would rather just have it so that you're, what we're presenting to town meeting has been well-vetted. That's all.
Yep.
Thank you, Counselor Dinoco. Vice Judge Santos.
Jonathan, thank you. I think it's great. I agree with Paul. April seems very ambitious to wrap this up. In addition to getting comments, are we, I think looking at best practices of certain communities makes sense too, because as someone who's been on creating vision statements for my school and other entities, it can get a little bit, everyone wants to add so much information that the vision statement then becomes very diluted. And I think the best vision statements, the, the school one is very good, very pointed, and it comes, you get those catchwords from it. So I think looking at some towns, just as guidance, even within not maybe the survey, but when we go back to the public, just to show examples of it, because I don't need, think we need to reinvent the wheel, although apparently the United States has invented the wheel, so hopefully people saw that news story.
I actually agree with you. So I was, that, so the vision statement is concerned...
Trump said reinvented the wheel. Yeah.
I agree. I think the example you gave is great, if there's other ones.
Right. And just so for, so folks know kind of what we're, I think it's okay for us to come up with a bit, a bit, a bit of a vision of what we're looking for, that it doesn't have to start on an empty slate. Now, certainly, the content can be all through collaboration, but we really want something, I would think we want something pointed, that we can use those words, and we can weave that throughout our entire, the department. But great, thank you.
Some of your best businesses, the vision statement is under seven words.
Yep. No, I think that's absolutely right. I think, you know, part of what we want to do is come up with something that's pithy, because, you know, if you have paragraphs and paragraphs...
Just do it.
It's not meaningful.
Yeah.
That's right, right? Just do it is one of them. I mean, that was, boom, just have it. It's something easy, and that people recognize and know and remember all the time.
I know that Mr. Mullen's not here. That might be a little problematic for him.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, for us, yes. I think, I think a certain coach already uses it, right? Or is that do your job? Which one is it?
I will mention too, I, I did make a connection with someone actually this, this weekend at the Mass Municipal Association Conference from MAPC, who's done some vision statement work with other communities. And so there are absolute resources out there, and I think the intent would be to try to leverage what other communities have learned too.
Counselor Smith Galvin.
I was gonna say that. I know they're doing their whole Metro Comm and, and work with them on that. They have some really wonderful, interactive ways to do public meetings. And I think this is really great. I mean, when we heard from the Zoning Board of Appeal, they really asked us for our vision. And I, and I really see that that is the kind of information that we'll get that then can inform other committees. I guess one thing just to think about, and nothing is set in stone, but as we get feedback through polls or surveys, and certainly focus groups to get kind of more in-depth information in these community groups, the committee members may want to reflect those. So, I mean, if there's a, I think you've done a good cross-section here of, of the boards, but if something comes up that is not covered by those boards, maybe we can, can look at, you know, reconstituting it like that.
Any other comments?
I would say that one of the, the things that we have talked about, to piggyback off of what you're saying, Counselor Smith Galvin, is the idea of all being on the same page, so that our committees, boards, and commissions know exactly what, you know, what our goals and objectives are, so we have those shared. So however we can arrive at that point, I think is, is a real positive. When we get to that point of the idea of a committee, I don't know that we should get too caught up in how many people are, who's represented, because I know some of our bigger committees, Mr. Mayo, that we can speak to, and Mr. Dinoco, get a little, a little hard to manage as, as a group. As long as we have all the voices a part of the process, I think that's more important than having the, a representation at the committee. And in some ways, a smaller working group that's able to reach out and have more direct contact with the different constituents might actually be a more effective way of getting to what you're looking for. Just a thought. This is not up for vote tonight, but what I would suggest is, we could just take a straw poll, basically. And if there's consensus of this body to move this forward, then, you know, Counselor Chines knows that it's the direction that, that the body would like to go in. So with that, I'll just take a straw poll. So all those that would be in favor of advancing forward what Counselor Chines has, has laid out for us in some form, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry. So it's a unanimous straw poll to move forward. Again, it's not a binding vote, but obviously, it gives you a little sense, and it gives the community a sense of where we are as a body.
Absolutely. No, appreciate that. So we'll, we'll start pulling some stuff together. I'll work with Mr. Mayo and Ms. McDonald and Counselor Button and anyone else who's interested in participating, let me know, and we'll, we'll start to get things rolling.
Great. Thank you, and thank you again for the time you've, you've spent on that. Very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Next item is item number 13. This, this is a discussion item. It relates to remote meeting participation. So I want to clarify, this relates to members of committees, boards, and commissions, and their participation at meetings for those committees, boards, and commissions. This is not about town meeting. This is not about public input coming in through non-live, not in-person means. And this issue had been raised recently again. We, as a body, did discuss it in 2018. It had a somewhat lukewarm reception at that time. The composition of this body has changed since then, and some people have raised, you know, different, different issues. So I am really just presenting before you tonight the, the idea that we, we have some options here to consider. You know, do we want to move forward with exploring this? And that's really where we are at this point, is exploring. There are plenty of pros, and there are plenty of cons. We, there are, I've had a number of conversations already with Mr. Mayo, just talking through some of the basic logistics, and I've asked Mr. Mayo to go forward and ask some other communities to kind of survey them, to get a sense of, have they done it? If they have, what's, what's their experience been? That's a work in progress at this point. I think it's fair to say, Mr. Mayo, you're continuing to do that. The, you know, and I, I'm not gonna cite all the, the pros and cons for it, because I think we all have them. Certainly, one of the, the advantages we see here is, is if there's an opportunity perhaps for people to participate that are currently not participating, because they feel as if, because of a, perhaps a, a work schedule that requires some travel, or work demands that at times may, may not allow them to participate on a regular basis to make every single meeting, that might dissuade them from wanting to apply for a committee board or commission. On the flip side, there is real value, a lot of people will say, to having in-person, you know, discussions, especially when you have presentations, and if, if people present handouts and the like, and, and there's engagement with the public, it's harder to, to do that when you're, when you're remote. And the question also is, what does remote even mean? I think at this point, we don't know. this point, we don't know. There is some law that, that guides us, some Massachusetts law relative to that. It, it talks about the idea of, of audio participation. Presumably video would be required and necessary. What are the sort of technology infrastructure concerns or considerations that we have in that? We have to explore that. Certainly, it seems that the direction, I mean, anyone in the private sector who's been involved with, you know, various, you know, meetings, video, video conferencing, it's fairly common. So it's, this is not a novel concept in general. It is a more novel concept at the municipal level though. And there are, you know, some other considerations that go into this that may not go into, say, a Fortune 500 company and being able to, to, to do that. So I think at this point, it, we have to kind of maybe get some information, be thinking through what some of the issues would be, be thinking through what some of the advantages are, what some of the disadvantages are, and then do, do a weighting of that. There's also a bit of an open question as to whether this is across the board or whether it can be selective. And there are some questions, for example, does that mean the town council? Does that mean the ZBA? That would be different than perhaps some of the other, the other meetings. And so we're still exploring those with Mr. Mullen, just to get some preliminary answers, so we understand the framework of a, of an understanding on that. So at, at this point, what I would suggest is that we, we consider going forward with surveying first our, our committees. So let's ask our, let's ask the chairs of, of our committees, of our boards, of our commissions. Let's kind of survey them and, and get a sense from them of, of how their attendance has been, what their thoughts are relative to this, you know, where they think the advantages will lie, where they think the disadvantages may lie. And then ask the broader question on, on the topic surveys, Mr. Counselor Chines, ask the broader question of the community, because we, the committees, commissions and boards can only speak to the members, but it can't speak to the people who aren't currently a part of those committees, commissions and boards. So we need to, I think, reach out to the community too and understand from them, you know, what their, what their thoughts are relative to that. I think that it's something that there seems to be an interest in moving forward on, exploring. So I'm happy to do that. I think, you know, again, this is not for a vote. We could also take a straw poll on this. But I do think there are some next steps and obviously want to open up to, up to, to a discussion as well. But that's kind of, you know, where I, I see us moving preliminarily on this, because as I said in 2018, there wasn't as much of a consensus for it. My sense is there's more of a consensus today, but I want to flesh that out.
No, I just, I just want to have a conversation. I think this is a discussion. So those are your viewpoints. I believe Counselor Smith Galvin had some thoughts on this.
Just to clarify, I wanted to frame the issue so that, so the public watching and so the body understands what, you know, what we're talking about here. So of course, this is a discussion. I'm, I'm looking for feedback on that, but I'm just trying to kind of frame it. Pros and cons, you know, good and bad, opportunities, we should, I, we should, I'm suggesting we should explore them further. With that, Counselor Smith, Smith Galvin.
Sure. I, I, and I, I asked for this to be raised. My recollection of when it was discussed in 2018 is, yes, there were definitely pros and cons and that we were going to look into it and bring it back. And so I've asked for it to be brought back. I guess I wasn't under the impression that it was dismissed at that time as lukewarm. So, so perhaps that's a different baseline. I've simply been approached by a couple of people who are in some, you know, committees in town that would like this as an option, much like the business, academics, communities have it. My reading of it, and I would definitely defer to, to our council, our town council, Mullen on it, is really it would be completely up to the chairperson to make the determination as to whether it's appropriate. And, and I tend to think that the more options we give to our boards and committees for flexibility, they do not have to use this mechanism necessarily, but there might be opportunities where it does work. I can think of many opportunities and, and boards, including this one likely, or where it would not work, quite honestly. Or ongoing hearings, ZBA planning, where frankly, we are trying to make it more transparent by having them recorded and, and perhaps that is not the, the right approach to take. So I, I definitely am all for looking at it, to look at the pros and cons. I, I also don't want to overthink it too much. I, I think if, if, you know, we, we trust kind of our chairpeople of our boards to know what their issues are and whether they have somebody, there's only five reasons you could use it, incidentally, for, for the public to know. It would be, in the cases of personal illness, personal disability, emergency, military service or geographic distance. And, and the situations I have heard have been more geographic distance. People who travel a bit for work and want to sit in on a meeting and, and exercise their ability to vote. So, so I would just ask that we not overthink it too much. Certainly, pros and cons, I don't want to sit on it for another year and a half. And I think reaching out to boards is really, and then thinking about the different kinds of boards we have and the situations that they're in would be very productive.
Further comment? Counselor Chines.
So maybe just to add on that, I do think this is something that, you know, we, we should be exploring. I mean, we, we talked about at one point, there are 300 some odd volunteer positions in this community. You know, and people are busy. I mean, the vast majority of these positions, almost all of them are unpaid. You know, these are things that people are doing, you know, with jobs and family and, and other issues. And so I, I think if there's an opportunity for us in an appropriate way and in appropriate circumstances to make it easier for people to participate, I think that will help us get, you know, good qualified people on some of these volunteer positions. I, I think the, you know, we've talked about and I, I think we, we sort of joked earlier, you know, and have joked in other meetings, you know, transportation in this area of the world is really difficult. A lot of us sit in a lot of traffic or sit on the tee or wherever else. And so, you know, just thinking about the ability to have quorums for boards and commissions, if, you know, it rains and it's going to take everyone 45 extra minutes to go home, things like that I think could be helpful. So, you know, while I, I, I think it is something that needs to be up to the discretion of the chair of each committee. I don't think it is appropriate for each committee. I, I think, you know, sitting on this committee, I mean, this is one where I, I would say this would be not appropriate for the town council. But I think to the extent that, you know, we have the ability to think about a systematic way in which we could offer some options, I think that would be useful. I do want to ask maybe just one question. As we do go through sort of the inventory and collecting feedback from boards and commissions, we should probably just confirm that no one is doing this now. I don't know if that's necessarily the right assumption to make and maybe there has been some remote participation in some ways. Probably something that we should validate and see if that does exist today in some of our boards and commissions.
There are actually two boards that can, under the Code of Mass regs, that can all, that can, on their, on their own volition adopt this. One is the Commission on Disabilities and the other one is actually the Retirement Board. So those two boards can do it without this, without the council's approval.
And do we know if they have?
I don't know if the Commission on Disability has. I don't know if the, if Retirement Board, I don't believe they have.
Retirement Board is not.
No.
My understanding is school committee may be able to as well in certain situations. You know, there's school committees that have multiple, that cover multiple towns.
Yep.
I'm not saying it's happened here or would happen here, but.
The other thing, you know, I agree, it shouldn't be overthought, but we have to make sure we think it through.
Of course.
To your point, Counselor Chines, you need a live quorum in order to vote. So that's something that's, you know, so you can't have, you know, a body of nine and, you know, seven of them participating remotely. So there are those sorts of considerations. So it's kind of like a multi-layered, you know, analysis.
But we also have to be able to allow, I mean, these are open meetings, so they have to be open in some way, which would assume that you have some physical presence of a certain core of individuals. And so that's something else that we've got to be mindful of, is we do have obligations, both I think legally, as well as I, I think just ethically under the open meeting law, to make sure that whatever we're doing, we're deliberating in public.
And we need, we need to think about it, I think as well, the fact that if people do come out, and it's the public participating, that they, there are live bodies, I think to your point. And think about what that means. You know, some, some opportunity here is, is just for telephone. Is that sufficient? A lot of people might say, no, it should be video, you know. And, and in that case, what do we need to make sure we have set up in order to, to enable that? Because we want to make it easy for the participants too. That's, that's really key to this, because it's not going to be successful otherwise if this were the direction, you know, with the town ends up going in. I think the bottom line is that we want to, to recruit the best people who can do the best job on any commission board or, or committee. That's what we're doing. So however, however we can do that, and the best job means making sure that they're actively engaged. And so I think that's something, there's, there's a lot of thought required. Vice Chair Santos.
Quickly, I would echo what everyone says. I think with the technology available now, any of us in the private or public sector probably has done a Zoom meeting, which is so easy and not expensive. And it doesn't require a lot of technology. I think we would be remiss to not look at these poss, the possibility of, of having some remote participation. And I think we can carve it in such a way that obviously you need a, a live quorum, but we probably could make it even a little, you know, we could make sure that someone's not the one person that does it every meeting. You know, I, I, we probably could institute some more rules. So I think it's something that we certainly want to look at. And just to have a good conversation, in 2020, we, we're all volunteer boards, we travel. Most of us are not getting paid. And I think to be able to access the full body of the board occasionally with someone remoting in makes sense.
Any other comments?
Last year, when we talked about this, I, I did put together kind of a very basic policy that we could think about, because the board will, our, our town council will have to adopt a policy that, you know, follows the, at least the minimum of the Code of Mass regs. And, you know, one question is, is it audio only, which seems to be a lot easier, or audio and video? So if you have video under the code, as I read it, the remote participant needs to be visible to everybody else at the meeting. That may cause someone some logistics that's away or something like that. And maybe, who knows where they are, might, might, might not be as easy. But I did speak to Town Council Mullen on this. None of his communities that he represents is doing this right now. So he did not have anything other than we had sent him. I will reach out to some of the communities around here that do have it, have used it limited from my recollections.
Sure.
And maybe come back with somewhat of a framework to think about, to kind of direct the discussion later on. But I do think that there are some boards where it's going to be a lot more difficult, especially in an adjudicatory position.
Yeah.
The other thing then is, is I read the Code of Mass regs, you do need to notify the chair in writing 24 hours ahead of time. So that case of where you're stuck on the train late.
Yeah, well.
You're going to be out of luck.
Yeah.
Sorry. According to the Code of Mass regs, as I read it, but we can pull all that stuff together.
Looks like Lynnfield has one, I believe. Lynnfield does have a policy on it.
Oh, I bet they've never used it.
Reach out to you.
I will reach out to. I bet they've never used it.
And we may never use it, but I think having it in place.
Makes sense.
Makes sense.
Yes.
And I think we also need to make sure we speak with IT as well, because there are some considerations there, because we, the public needs to be able to see the person who's participating. So we have to think about what that is. And it could be something as simple as having some screens up that people can just, you know, project up onto. But making sure that each of our facilities has, has that capability, so we don't run afoul of, of, you know, what our requirements are. So I'll take a straw poll on this as well. The sense that I get is that people are interested in moving forward to explore this further, which would be primarily, Mr. Mayo, if I can defer to you on that, gathering up information on the other communities, seeing some other policies, seeing, and then you're just taking a, a basic survey yourself of, of what kind of success they found with it. And if we don't, if you don't know of any currently, if we can just seek out further other communities, because I'm sure that there are, are a number that have policies. That would be helpful. All right. So why don't we also just take a straw poll on that then as well, in terms of moving forward with exploring this option of remote meeting participation? So all of those in favor? All right. So voted seven to zero. So we'll, we'll again, we'll move that along, Mr. Mayo, through your office and then you can report back at the appropriate time. Thank you for everyone for the discussion on that. Thank you, Counselor Smith Galvin, for raising it again. Item number 14 is the annual town meeting, our Spring Town Meeting, and the setting of, of the date. The proposal is to set the date for May 4th, 2020, to begin to open town meeting. I will entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved, say.
Moved by Counselor Dinako, seconded by Counselor May. Any discussion? Counselor Chines.
One, one quick request. I, I think in prior years, and I know this isn't sort of the purview of our vote today, but in, in prior years, I, I'm not sure that there's been as much kind of clarity and transparency around if town meeting were to go to a second or third night, when those second or third nights would be. I'd maybe just ask if, you know, as we do publicize the warrant, you know, working with the town clerk's office, we could maybe make that information clear upfront, so that if folks anticipate that it will be more than one night, they know what'll happen next.
We can certainly suggest that what may happen.
I understand that town meeting could decide something else.
Town meeting could decide something.
But again, anything that we could do, even if it is technically a suggestion, I, I think would be beneficial to folks that are in attendance.
I think we, we could probably promote the historic practice of what has happened and then, and get it out that way. I think usually it's, we're looking at what, Monday, Thursday.
Monday, Thursday.
Monday, Thursday, Monday, Thursday has been the, the general routine for that. All right. So I have a motion and, and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, the motion before you is to set the opening of a Spring Town Meeting for May 4th, 2020. All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote of seven to zero. The motion carries unanimously. Next item is item 14B. This is a, seeking to open the warrant. I will entertain a motion to open the warrant for the annual town meeting for May 4th.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Dinako. Any discussion? Seeing none, the motion before you is to open the warrant for Spring Town Meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote of seven to zero. The motion carries unanimously. Item 14C, date to close the warrant. I will entertain a motion that proposes the closing of the Spring Town Meeting warrant on March 26, 2020 at 4:30 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Chines. Any discussion? The motion before you would be to close the Spring Town Meeting warrant on March 26, 2020 at 4:30 PM. All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote of seven to zero. The motion carries unanimously. Item number 15 is constituent issues. This is the opportunity for councillors to raise and report back briefly any issues that constituents have raised. There will be no votes taken, but they may become agenda items in the future. Any constituent issues to raise this evening? Counselor Chines.
Just two things. First of all, one that I, I generally would just work with Mr. Mayo directly, but wanted to mention it because this is an area that we've talked about a lot in, in this session. But a constituent brought to my attention, there isn't a stop sign at the end of Armory Street when you go to turn on to North Ave, which is a little concerning. Again, something generally I would, Mr. Mayo, just bring to you, but I, I did want to mention it because we've talked a lot about sort of traffic and pedestrian safety in that area, along North Ave, where the, you know, near the, near the Galvin and with the, the train crossing there. And so just want to bring it up publicly and, and maybe ask, as we think about the Traffic Advisory Committee's agenda over the next couple of months, that that be another area of focus that we talk through. You know, this is a very microscopic issue of, I think, a larger issue where there's just a lot of people and a lot of cars at some very busy times of day and we want to make sure everyone's safe. Second thing that I just want to mention, I know there's been a lot of sort of chatter on social media in the last couple of days and, and the article in the item today about the old American Mutual building at the head of the lake and possible disposition of that. And certainly, you know, our role as a council is not to adjudicate that, especially when nothing has been proposed yet. But given that that is such a visible area in our community, that building does have some historic value. And I think given the, the business development potential, as we think about what could happen at the end of the lake, I'd maybe ask, you know, Mr. Chair, that we, we consider inviting the, the owners of the building to come before the council, really for informational purposes more than anything else. I, I think it would benefit sort of us and the community at large if we could hear a little bit about, you know, their vision, any challenges they're facing, sort of alternatives or plans for the future. Again, not with the expectation that we as a councillor are taking any votes on the issue, but I think just to get a community conversation going that, again, very directly impacts a resource in town that I think we all, we all treasure and we all see as a, a key part of our community.
Thank you, Counselor Chines. Anyone else? Counselor Smith Galvin.
Just two quick things. I'm still getting complaints of people going the wrong way on Common Street. I don't know, Steve, whether there's anything we can do. I, I think after a while, like the flags, you kind of get used to things again, so maybe it's time to put a flashing out there.
We'll look into it. They also go in the wrong way on Lafayette too.
Oh, really?
So, I know.
I, I know. I don't have any solutions. I, and it sounds like there was a yield sign that was knocked down this weekend. And so anyway, whatever we can do to maybe shake things up there a little bit. And I also had a constituent interest in perhaps making the town meeting book and information a little more descriptive. And that may be something we can't take on for April, but just over time, more background on things, on different votes and whatnot. And, and there's some examples that I can share.
Okay.
But I thought that might be interesting. I wanted to raise it.
I would say I've heard from various, a number of constituents actually on the same topic. And so I think there's some value there.
Thank you. Counselor Dinako.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only issue that I'm going to bring up and it keeps recurring is there is The only issue that I'm going to bring up, and it keeps recurring, is there is an awful lot of vehicles parking on sidewalks, and it's forcing people to walk into the street, especially on blind corners. There's an ordinance in place right now. I think that we have to take action on it, instead of me making comment on it at several meetings and inaction occurring. Something has to be done about it. We have a bylaw in place. You're not supposed to park on the sidewalks. Okay? No one should be forced to walk into a street. Plain and simple. Mother with a carriage, someone jogging, anything. If there's a sidewalk there, and it's a town sidewalk, it should not be blocked. And there's several of them. You can go down Oak Street, Salem Street, you can go up to Montrose, Butler. I mean, I walk with my wife sometimes. I mean, we're in the street more than when we're on the sidewalks. It shouldn't, it should never be that way. So I don't know how we address it, if it's through the board, if we get the chief in here to discuss it. There has to be a course of action to move that forward for a remedy. That's it.
Thank you, Councilor Dinoco. Any further? All right, thank you for those, and certainly there's some follow-up there. Item number 16 is warrants, alternative, Councilor Chines, we're looking for an update on warrants. Warrant number 25 dated December 17, 2019, through warrant 30 dated January 21, 2020.
So this morning, actually, I signed the warrants that are summarized in your packet, totaling 13.6 million, you know, variety of, you know, significant areas of spend, obviously payroll being one of them, group insurance, bond payments, transfers to the enterprise funds. Details in the packet if folks have any questions.
Any questions for Councilor Chines? How's it feel to sign for $13 million plus?
It's a little weird, to be honest.
Not like writing a check.
My household budget is very, very, very significantly less than that.
Item number 17, Chairman's comments. I just have two things that I wanted to touch on briefly. Our first is Chapter 70 funding, and there's a bit of a PowerPoint here. This information has previously been sent around the council. Chapter 70 funding is our main state aid school funding, and we've discussed it many times here as a body. Mr. Mayo has been one of the champions relative to our Chapter 70 funding and pointing out the disparities that exist. So if you look at our, the Chapter 70 funding trends currently, again, this is the major state aid component for public elementary and secondary schools. For fiscal year 2020, on the cherry sheet, so that's the, and these are preliminary numbers, I caution everyone, but preliminarily, fiscal year 2021 is budgeting us at about 6.849798 million, so just over 6.8 million dollars. That breaks down to a per student aid of only $1,965, or put it another way, an increase of only 1.9%. And if you look historically, and thank you, Mr. Mayo, for gathering this up, if you look historically at our fiscal years, you can see what the funding trends have been and what our percent increases have been. This is one of the, this is, since fiscal year 17, this is actually the lowest percentage increase we've seen, again, preliminarily. And if we look at the next slide two, at 6.849 million, you can see the year-over-year increase and how that's changed from fiscal '17 to 2021.
Can I ask you a question from the first slide that wasn't clear to me? So Steve, how we increased 1.9%, do we know what the other communities increased?
Yes, and you'll see that.
Stay tuned.
Oh, it was. I'm sorry, I missed it. I saw the money. I didn't see the percentages.
But I will tell you that others that are very similar had a much better bearing this time around.
Does it list the percentages in the?
No, but I can, I can tell you what they were.
Okay. I saw the numbers, and I could do the percentages myself, I guess. Okay, thank you.
So just doing a community comparison, one thing that Mr. Mayo and I have spoken about a number of times relative to Chapter 70 funding is looking at demographically similar communities to ours. And so we're not looking at, say, bigger cities, for example, but comparable communities. So these are some that we looked at, some of our neighboring communities, to give a sense. Redding, Saugus, Melrose, Stonem and Wakefield. And you can see our student number, our total number of students at about, just shy of 3,500, puts us kind of like in the middle of that pack. Our Chapter 70 aid is 6.849, and again, the per student aid is only 1,965 per student. Compare that to any of these other communities. I'll point out Redding, for example, they're getting $2,638 per student. Melrose getting $2,405, and Stonem getting $2,401 per student versus what we're getting, less than 2,000. So to just kind of put that in comparison, you see where we fall, and this is not, this happens to be where we fall currently, but this is not all that different. Mr. Mayo, I think you could probably assign almost any year.
Yep.
And it's very comparable in terms of how these bars line up.
Unfortunately, something I've been railing about for a long time.
So just to kind of put this in perspective for the community, if we receive the same per student aid as, say, Melrose or Stonem, for example, that would be 1.5 million more dollars of state aid to support our schools and our children. The same question, if we receive the same per student aid as Saugus, we would be at 2.2 million in additional state funding through Chapter 70. And if we just received the same funding as Redding, we would be ahead 2.3 million in additional funding from where we are currently. So that was really just meant to be an overview for the community to understand. Again, these are preliminary numbers. They are subject to change, but if historical trends are any indicator, we're probably looking comparatively to fall where we are now. I credit Mr. Mayo, you for several years now have been very, you know, quite vociferous in your, in voicing this concern to our delegation. I know that you did reach out to our delegation already relative to these preliminary numbers. I'll say that the response that we got back was not promising relative to where we land. There were a number of different reasons given as to why we can't just look at the per pupil, you know, number, but we need to figure out some kind of benchmark here. And if you look at a place like Redding or Stonem, we're pretty comparable to those communities. And the fact that their state aid is surpassing us by a significant amount, not just in dollars, but as a percentage of the whole, should be concerning to all of us, because the less state aid we have, the more taxpayer dollars in order to achieve the same objectives here. And so that's where we are currently. The budgeting is still in process, but I think we can all, you know, share the concern that we have that's been ongoing relative to, it feels like Wakefield not getting a fair shake relative to other comparable communities. So that's, that's an overview. Any questions or comments relative to that? Vice Chair Santos?
So this is something we've dealt with for years, prior to a lot of folks that are on this committee. Redding completely baffles me. We are not, we're similar to Redding, but I would argue that they, it just doesn't make sense that our students get less. And I was not very enamored by the response from our senator that we can't compare apples to apples, apples to oranges. Yeah, we can, because there's no way Wakefield should be 600, $700 less per pupil. It doesn't make sense. We, in, regardless of what else is going on around here, we don't have a state representative for Wakefield. No matter what happens in a week or so, we do not have a dedicated state representative for Wakefield. So when redistricting happens in 2022, I think we have to come out very strong and argue that, you know, I don't know that that would make a difference, but historically, it doesn't make sense. The formula doesn't make sense as to why we get absolutely, you know, can't think of the word I can't use on TV. So, and I was talking to another rep about these numbers, a former rep, and he suggested they, they look so crazy that was there a mistake? Was there a mistake in the math because it seems so off that Wakefield is down? I think we need to demand from someone to explain this, because our students are not getting their fair share of money based on the surrounding towns.
If I can.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
We've railed about this for so long.
I went on a big rail about this, and I have been for 20 years, I think, now. What, so we hear that we have the Great Student Opportunities Act. Wonderful, okay? More money going to education, we all agree with that. To see that come out, and I was frankly looking forward to the Chapter 70 mon, Chapter 70 numbers. I figured we'd be somewhere, you know, maybe two or three times this increase, based on cestorics, and maybe jumping up on top of that. But to get a 1.9% increase, okay, while Melrose, and I'm very happy for Melrose, got probably 10 or 11% increase. They got close to $1 million more in Chapter 70 over last year, okay? Very happy for my friends in Stonem and Saugus that probably got 6% or 8% more. Redding, which was always way out there, they got a lesser percentage increase than we did, but I don't feel too bad for them, as I told their town manager today, and we did hear a laugh over that. So I thought there could be a mistake in the back of my mind. There's something that doesn't make sense here, because I think that we're pretty similar to those other communities on a per student basis. I get it. One of the arguments will say, well, they get more because, some community gets more because they have more students. I agree with that, but it's the per student amount. And I think part of the issue is, and is that what the state legislature will often do, and I get this, is they'll say, all right, we're going to give every community $30 more per student, okay? All that does is that just moves the problem, continues to exacerbate the situation. I'd like to see something, and I've been thinking about this, there has to be a minimum of per student. That might be a way to lift Wakefield up. Or are we doing something wrong in reporting? No one has told me that. So I will be looking into this over the next few months, but I will tell you that if we are looking at a 1.9% increase in, in Chapter 70 money, that is, that has a trickle-down effect, or a direct effect, really, in what we can do budgeting. Because I'll tell you, there's a lot of people out there that were much more enthusiastic than I was on getting a lot more money on this in Wakefield. I was never as, but I'm still, you know, I look at, you know, hey, could be, you know, if it was 400,000, 500,000, I'd say, all right, we got a, we got a good bang, but, you know. So it is, it is very disheartening, but it is step one. We will be working with our state delegation to see what we can do. But I do not accept the pushback that it's complicated, complicated, and you've got to look at everything. I get that, but you can't tell me, and I've said this for years, similarly, demographic communities, demographically, can't be that much disparity per student.
Who's in charge of the reporting aspect of it, Steve? Because I remember years ago, Redding did some things with reporting that we had not been doing years ago.
Yeah, years ago, I think like, you know, one, we were told one year that we didn't have, and this is a horrible thing, right? We didn't have enough kids on free and reduced lunches. If we had more, that would make a big difference. What a horrible thing to hope for, right?
Absolutely.
But we did do, made, made some steps at the school department to actually report better, because people weren't, maybe weren't taking it because of a stigma where they shouldn't have been.
Sure.
So that's something that they did do years ago there. But I'm tired of being told we're on the cusp of getting that, that little bit better bump.
I agree. So the school department is solely responsible?
Not solely, but half of it, and there's also the wealth of the community they're looking at, and there's a lot of other factors that they say they're looking at, but
Yeah, I know.
I don't see the issue myself.
I think it's also important to point out that Governor Baker signed in 304 million more dollars into Chapter 70 funding. So we have 351 communities, and 304 million dollars was infused in, and this is the net result for Wakefield.
Right.
And it has a direct impact on our taxpayers, because we're having to make up the difference, because we all, you know, we, I think our vision statement already, so we want a tremendous education for every child within our district. We know that. So we have to pick up wherever the state is failing us. So I think it's more than an explanation is needed, a fix needs, it has to happen. So we need to explain first, but then also figure out what it is that can and needs to be done differently, because it is just patently unfair that every year we're bearing the brunt of this while every other community is not seeing it. Councilor Chines?
Just two comments slash requests. I think the first is, I know we've looked at this before, but, you know, just to make sure that we aren't leaving any stone unturned, I do think, you know, to Councilor Santos's suggestion, I do think that we should look at how we are reporting data to the state again, and would ask Mr. Mayo that you collaborate with the school department to do that.
Certainly will.
You know, because this is such a material difference, I mean, I think it is worth double and triple checking to make sure that we understand the formula, we understand the data submission requirements, and that we actually are doing everything that we can. The second request I actually have is to folks that are watching, I really do encourage residents to call our legislative delegation, Senator Lewis and Representative Wong, and we will have a new state representative after May 3rd, 3rd, for precincts four, five, and six. And so I think it's important that as residents, March 3rd, sorry, not May 3rd. I do think it's important that as residents, we also make our voice heard, that, you know, this is a concern that we have as residents of Wakefield, and this is something that, you know, as voters, as citizens, we'd like to see our delegation put some focused effort on seeing if there are ways that we can improve the formula so that it is equitable for our community.
Thank you. Councilor, go.
And just to build on what Jonathan said, I think it's been about a year since we had the delegation come in front of us, Steve.
I would say so, yeah.
So I wouldn't mind inviting them back. You know, Senator Lewis was the lead, one of the leads on the committee that wrote this new funding structure, so I'd love for him and Representative Wong to come. It's been, it's been over a year, so let's welcome them back. And I do think echoing, let's, let's look at what they're basing the factors on.
Councilor Dinoco?
So, I mean, my only comment is going to echo Ms. Santos. I, looking at this, and I've always looked at this around the communities, I think Wakefield is the only one that has split representation, and I think that has a big impact on the Hill. I think that's huge.
Redding does as well.
Does Redding have it?
Yep.
It can't be just formula, because we've been listening to this for as long as I've been on the board, that, oh, it just happens to be the formula. But they won't change the formula if that's the case. So there's something underlying out there. Steve, you've been going after this forever on this, and they keep telling us, well, we just have to live with the formula. And then I thought they were going to correct the formula when they came up with this new approval, and it still doesn't help us any. I mean, the money has to come from somewhere. Where's it going to come from now? And that's another worry that you have to deal with.
Well, I think at this point, we should, you know, not just be frustrated, but figure out what the actionable next steps are relative to this, because this is an issue that we have to pursue, and we have to get, you know, figure it out and resolve. Councilor Smith Galvin?
So there's a good article in the Commonwealth Magazine today, and it points out that this does not include, so this is just the Chapter 70 formula, as you said, so this does not include new money that's been set aside for special education, for charter school tuition reimbursement, and other programs. So I really think that we need to figure out the Chapter 70, but we need to be very, you know, forthcoming in saying we expect, we have big expenses in some of those other areas as well.
Absolutely.
So I guess, Mr. Mayo, in terms of, you know, next steps, if we can determine how we're reporting, and then if we can all maybe get some thought to what actionable steps we can take, I think, you know, Councilor Chines' is a good one in terms of reaching out to the delegation to let them know that, you know, it's inequitable, what we're talking about here now, and what needs to be changed, and hopefully we can revisit this even at the next meeting potentially, or have some updates relative to that. Again, just so everyone watching is clear, these are preliminary numbers, they're not final numbers, but we don't expect major shifts relative to what we're seeing here today, at least in comparison to the other communities that I've cited here. And again, thank you, Mr. Mayo, for gathering a lot of that information. It was incredibly helpful.
Thank you for the therapy session.
Item 17B, I just wanted to provide the community and ask anyone else as well to provide the community with an update. This past weekend, we had the Massachusetts Municipal Association Annual Conference and Trade Show. This was a great opportunity for us to attend a lot of different programs, and it's very interactive as well. We're able to meet a lot of different, different folks that do similar work to what we do. I think my biggest takeaway, as I mentioned to this members previously, is Wakefield's doing a lot of things right. And when you sit through a lot of these programs and you hear suggestions for how to employ a better practice, in many instances, we're doing it already. And in some instances, we're light years ahead of a lot of other communities that are comparable to us. So I think we do a lot of things well, but every time that I attend this program, there are takeaways inevitably. I, I focus a lot on economic development and chapter ninety funding relative to our roads on this one in particular, and, you know, anyone else that wants to offer up, you know, some of their takeaways. But I think the bottom line is, there's, there's always something to, we can do better, but we do a lot of things really well, and that's, it's always a good kind of sounding board or, or a check against some of our peers. Anyone else have any comments on MMA? Counselor Chines?
So, I, I would echo that. I, you know, certainly as a first-time counselor and attendee, it was, it was a really valuable couple of days for me, a lot of good sort of tips and ideas around economic development, affordable housing, you know, promotion of public spaces and things like that, a lot of great things that I came out. I also did want to highlight, one of the best sessions that I attended was actually one where our colleague, Counselor Butt, was a, a panelist on community engagement, and so just wanted to recognize her work and her leadership within the Mass Municipal Association. It was a, an overflow crowd in the room. I know Counselor Smith Galvin and I were, were able to attend at the, the end of the day on, on Saturday. So, thank you for that, and also highlighting some of the great work that we're doing here in Wakefield to the other member communities of the MMA.
Indeed.
Yeah, I think, can I?
Of course.
Yeah, thank you so much. So, you know, it's fun to talk about some of the stuff we've done over the last couple of years from Wakefield one oh one, which I mentioned was my idea based on what Lexington had presented three years ago. They do a six-week session and talk to Steve, and Steve's like, we'll do a one, two-hour session, but it's been really successful in talking about how we've, as a town, have increased local election turnout over the past three years increasingly. It's still not, you know, great, we're still not Australia, but we're getting there, and, and really got in some great candidates as we keep on seeing for all of our boards. Sherry, one of them that we recently appointed, but just having, you know, choices, which when I joined the board was, is new, and so it was really appreciated. My favorite story from that session is there's someone, a counselor from a town, and he didn't name the town, but he said that they have a hundred vacancies on their boards, and they're trying to recruit, and they have a town of three hundred and fifty-six. And I didn't know how to respond.
Two-day boards?
Yeah, I, I did suggest that. I said, maybe you should look at your boards, and, and maybe you don't need the fence viewing board or committee. So, it was a good problem of, of, and getting great ideas, I think, as much I echo what the chair said, that we do a lot great. And then there's always room to be bigger and brighter, and so going to a session, listening about, you know, the opioid crisis, which we've talked about, and some how to create more open spaces, and how, did you go one on hosing? There's one on liquor licenses. So, there's just actually have these great panels where we all have kind of ideas that I think we'll be talking about over the next couple of weeks.
Counselor DeNaco.
One of the good things that I get out of going to these association meetings is that the sit-down and talking to representatives from the other communities. It's, it's interesting to see what they're worried about as compared to what we're concerning ourselves with. And you brought up a good point. A lot of them do bring up, they can't get anyone to run for office. Okay, so there'll be a, a counselor or selectman seat open, or a planning board seat open. Nobody wants to commit to the community, but there's always a lot of people in attendance. And it ranges. They worry about how they're funding OPEB, how they're dealing with insurance, and, and they come in to find out what others are doing so that they can bring it back. That, that's a really interesting component to the whole weekend that I find very interesting. And you can gain some great insight from what they tell you, because they may be doing something that we're not. So, it's, it's good, it's good experience.
Good. Well, again, Wakefield was very well represented at that, and so, thank you, everyone, for taking part and taking notes. I think we all probably have plenty of mental and written notes from that. Item number eighteen is matters not anticipated for the agenda. This is any matters that, these would include matters. They came up in the last forty-eight hours that could not meet the public notice requirements. Do we have any? Seeing none. Item number nineteen is announcements and acknowledgements. Again, this is the opportunity for our town counselors, Madam Clerk and Mr. Mayo, to offer up any announcements or recognition. Counselor DeNaco.
I have two, Mr. Chair. It's from the, from the police department. I just let people know that the police unions raised one thousand fifty dollars from their November and December activities. The money was split between the Wakefield Alliance Against Violence and the Wakefield Food Pantry. And the other is that with the help of our state representative, Donald Wong, the police department was able to secure a fifteen thousand dollar grant that will be used to train all officers in critical incident stress management. It's two great things that our police department will continue to do, and making sure that they're better than other communities.
Absolutely, indeed. The best. Counselor Butt?
Sure, just a couple of things. So, I want to just take a moment to congratulate the Human Rights Commission on an amazing MLK Day, MLK and Coretta Scott King Day last week. I think it was the biggest well-attended yet. It actually was the best programming, great student participation, a great community service program. So, just want to recognize that Human Rights Commission on continuing to do great work. I, just two reminders coming up. The Community Garden info session, the next one is Wednesday, the fifth, from seven to eight at the Civic Center. Come and share your ideas and ask questions. We'd love to see you. And then also, we talked a lot about it today, but just a reminder for everyone in precinct four, five, and six, Tuesday, February fourth, there is an election at the Galvin Middle School. Polls are open from seven AM to eight PM.
Thank you, Counselor Butt. Counselor Chines?
Thank you. Couple of things. First of all, just want to say to Counselor May, so delighted that you're back, and my apologies that I may have increased your stress that led to the last ten months. I'll really carry a little bit of guilt for that, Peter, but it's very serious, and it's great to have you back, and I'm glad that, you know, things are, are on the upswing. Just a couple of quick things, you know, Maureen mentioned the election coming up next week. I, I did want to highlight, and I know that Town Clerk, Betsy Sheeran, was here earlier, but her team really does a great job. I mean, putting an election on and putting it on seamlessly and flawlessly is incredibly challenging, and so just wanted to make sure that, you know, as a body, we, we thank Betsy and her staff, Rose Morgan and Denise Oats, for all of the great work. I mean, Betsy literally has sleepless nights leading up to elections, so appreciate all the work there, as all, as well as all the work from the Wakefield Police Department, the DPW, and the school department in terms of making an election happen. Speaking of the Wakefield Police Department, they will be working with Respond to host a teen dating violence awareness workshop that's coming up in a couple of weeks on February eighteenth at six PM. I believe that's at the police station, and should be a, a good program, certainly a valuable program for folks to see. And finally, just wanted to highlight that the Wakefield Educational Foundation Adult Team Spelling Bee is coming up on February twenty-eighth at seven o'clock at the Elks. I think for my team, we are hoping to not repeat our kind of mediocre performance last year. We weren't terrible, but we weren't great, but really a great event for a good cause, and hopefully folks participate in that.
Thank you for that, Counselor Chines. Anyone else? Counselor Smith Galvin?
My team is all ready for the Spelling Bee.
Your team did well last year.
So, we are, we are in costume mode. I, I just have, the, I don't think anybody's mentioned this, the library every year picks a theme, and this year, it's just for the fun of it, imagine, create, and play, and it's all about leaving your stress behind, which, what could be better for two thousand and twenty? So, they have some, a, a whole series of events. Look online, pick one of these up. I think the next one is uncommon instruments, so adults only, march the beat of different drummers. So, it's just a really, I think they do wonderful programming, and this is really creative. So, I wanted to, to just point that out. And of course, vote on February fourth if you're in four, five, or six. Yes?
Anyone else? All right. I just wanted to remind everyone that the Respectfully Poster Campaign submissions are due by this Friday, the thirty-first. Wakefield Alliance Against Violence is giving out a fifty-dollar Amazon gift card to every, every winner from every grade one through twelve. And there's also a public service announcement project as well, and information on that is available through Wakefield Alliance Against Violence Waves Facebook page on that. And I've also kind of thrown out some stuff out on Facebook as well on that. Also want to echo for everyone else, the fourth is, is the primary for the special election, talking about state funding and some of the issues, you know, having a delegation that is supportive of Wakefield is obviously huge, so I'd encourage everyone to certainly make sure you turn out and have your voice heard on that, and hopefully we'll end up with some better education funding numbers going forward. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Counselor Smith Galvin, seconded by Counselor May. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Out of votes seven to zero, the motion carries. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you for watching Wakefield, and good night.